And welcome to Bristol's Town Meeting for 2020. My name is Fred Basar and I am your town moderator. And it's my job to help you get through this meeting and make the decisions that you would like to concerning the articles and do it in a polite and courteous way. As has been our tradition, and I want to deal with this right up front, we have two legislators with us today, your legislators, Caleb Elder and Mari Cordis. And without assuming there's no objections from the floor, as these folks are from out of town, we'd like to have them speak for three, four minutes to get a sense for what the dialogue is up in Montpelier. So I think I'm going to do that first. And we also have Krista Siringo, who does live in town, and she's a representative on our school board, which of course is very different now, on school board for the entire part of towns. She'd like just a few minutes also to speak. So having said that, Mari, where are you? If you could, yep, come right up and use the center mic. You can either take it out or turn the stand around and we'll give you the floor for a minute or two or three.
Good evening, Bristol. Hi. Caleb and I have prepared a town meeting report for you, and I'll pass it around. You can email us for electronic versions, and within the next couple of days, we'll also have them posted on social media, all the medias and our websites, maricordis.org and calebelder.com. So there's way more going on than I can explain in three minutes. I'm so happy to be one of your representatives with the senators. We're working really hard, really fast. I'm on the House Healthcare Committee, and we're committed right now to do what we can to make healthcare more affordable, given the constraints we have on the national and the state level, and that we're working in the state with both public funding and with commercial payers. I have introduced a bill thinking about pharmaceuticals. Pharmaceuticals are the primary reason why the cost of healthcare is going up. And healthcare is one of the primary reasons, if not the reason, why the cost of education is going up. So we're doing as much as we can in the state to bring those, to maintain those costs, to keep them from rising more. So on that note, as a nurse of 32 years in Vermont, and as someone who has organized around, and been an activist on healthcare policy for decades here in Vermont, it's, I was very motivated to introduce a bill to reduce the out-of-pocket expenses that a diabetic person would pay for their insulin to $100 a month. There's a senate bill that is a mirror bill that is also moving through. It'll come over to the House soon. All that to say, it has tripartisan or for counting independents, quadripartisan support. So I'm confident that in Vermont, people who need insulin will likely, we still have to go through conference committees and see what the governor does, but only $100 a month out of pocket. We're also looking at the affordability of healthcare through the exchange. Many of you in this room may be impacted by the benefits cliff. If you have a moderate income, you don't qualify for subsidies. If you make a dollar more than that cliff, then all of a sudden you have to pay a lot of money for your health insurance. So we're seeing what we can do to minimize that cliff or remove it at the range between 400 and 500% of federal poverty level. We're also looking at the family glitch, where if you, one person in the family has employer-sponsored insurance, but no one else is covered on that plan, though the rest of the family is also not eligible for subsidies through the state. So we're looking at, working on trying to remove that family glitch, so everybody in the household can have health insurance. Who knew healthcare would be so complex? A lot more going on in House Healthcare. I love it. Representative Sharp warned me when I said that was the first committee of choice for me, that I might get a little frustrated. It's true, I do get frustrated, but I still love it and am working real hard in it. Another love is working on environment with my background in natural resource management and just living here in this amazing community. So I introduced a bill to strengthen protections with the Vermont water quality standards, strengthen protections for wetlands. There are, they are protected to a degree, but there's also a gap that you could drive a so-called truck through. So we got some help from Jim Dumont on that one and Vermont Natural Resources Council. And as a vice chair of the Climate Solutions Caucus, organized 20 community forums around the state so we could hear from you. You could hear about the really amazing work the legislators did through the summer to come up with a number of bills, some of them, the bigger ones we call our banner bills. One of them, the Global Warming Solutions Act passed, I think it was last week, 105 to 37. So again, tripartisan or quadripartisan support. So we have a solid foundation to work as a community to address the climate emergency in doing it, using the principles of just transition, so that as we move forward, we have in the front of our work, in the front of our minds, those that are most vulnerable. So thank you so much for working with me on all of these bills and so much more, and for reaching out, whether we agree or not, you might change my mind. So please do continue to reach out. I love hearing from you, and I love having you visit at the State House. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Caleb Elder. I live in Starksboro. I'm the other member of the Addison Four delegation to Montpelier. And thank you very much for allowing me to serve in that role. It really is a privilege to serve this community in Montpelier. I've been on the Mount Abraham School Board, the Mount Abraham Unified District Board since its inception. A couple of years ago, prior to that, I'd been on the Robinson Elementary Board. And so that kind of five or six years of school board experience is helpful, particularly because I'm on the House Education Committee. And I appreciate getting to understand how all of our local issues tie right up to the state level. And then there's nothing more kind of personal and on the ground in our communities and our schools. There's also no part of our state budget that is greater or even as great. So it's an issue that kind of spans so much of our life in the state of Vermont, and every issue comes through the schools potentially at some point. So just to focus a little bit on that, we had a really important study come out at the beginning of this session, which is called the pupil weighting study. And this is kind of a wonky issue, but I'm just going to say, this is a key part of the equation that decides how education funding is split up statewide and is apportioned. And it's how we calculate the all-important equalized pupil measure. And so this is a really important study. These weights haven't been changed since the late 90s. They were not scientifically derived at that time, which is a problem. And the weight to economically disadvantaged students, as well as English language learners, would be seriously changed under these recommendations. So this isn't something that we can, some would say we need to act right away this year. There's certainly a lot of people saying, wait a minute, this is such a huge thing, you can't act that quickly. So we very much are feeling that pressure on both sides right now. There is not a bill, but there's been some testimony in Senate Education. House Education has just been sort of hearing the testimony at this point. That's on the horizon. Another one, school construction. Today, a $209 million bond, or excuse me, tomorrow, will be voted on in South Burlington. Now, that's a huge bond. And it's, you know, six or seven times the size of the bonds that we've decided not to pass in this community. However, I'm not suggesting, really no judgment there for this purpose. 210 million in South Burlington does affect us. It affects education spending for the whole state, so it does affect every district. And so there hasn't been any state aid for school construction in 12 years. This means there's also no state control. There's no mechanisms of assessment, there's no mechanism of control. And so if, again, not to cast aspersions, but if a wealthier community can pass a bond that, you know, is as big as they want, then everybody kind of has to help pay for that. There's no role for the state in kind of saying, what is a qualified expense here? What is a non-qualified expense? So we're trying to wrap our arms around that. Wrapping up here, I promise. Pre-K, we've been trying to clean up the, some of the pre-K regulations. Program's about six years old. It's had about 9,000 students that are participating. When you consider we got about 75,000 students statewide, K through 12, that's a lot of students. And so it's important to get that program right. It's complicated, it's a mixed delivery. It's being done in private centers, it's being done in home centers, it's being done in the public schools. Regional coordinators are helpful, and so we are doing some additional support for that position. We happen to have a great one in Addison County right now, who delivers tremendous value. But that's been important work. And the last thing I'll mention is a literacy bill. This ties into a big bill called Act 173, that really transitions the way we do special ed funding. This bill also looks at dyslexia and screening and literacy, and we did take testimony about that, because frankly, the reading scores statewide in Vermont are not acceptable. Up to two-thirds of students are at kind of basic or below levels, and it's really, it's problematic. And also, if you are not reading and are not screened for literacy problems, such as dyslexia or many other conditions, before grade three, it just has a huge effect on any other learning you could do, as well as your social and mental health in the school. So this is a priority of, I know the Secretary of Education, and certainly both the House and Senate Committees. And so that, we just passed that bill last week on that subject. I won't go on about the kind of whole house stuff, because it was a lot on education, but I'm writing about the stuff at calebelder.com every week. I'm a week behind, so it was locked on my site last week, but I'm back on mine. And so I'll be getting our town meeting reports up and some stuff about last week. Thanks again for allowing me to serve as community in Montpelier. It's truly an honor.
Thank you, Mari and Caleb. I suspect they might hang around if you have any questions. You can maybe catch them in the back. And as Kristin Siringo comes to tell us a little bit about our school district, I just wanted to thank the Masons, who have a lodge up on North Street, for providing us refreshments this evening. Feel free at any time to help yourself, okay? And enjoy. Krista?
Hi. Thank you. I don't know if any other school board members that are representing Bristol are here today, but I'm Krista Siringo, and this is Kevin Hansen. And here's... Okay. Better? Okay. So we are the representatives for Bristol on the Mount Abraham Unified School District School Board. This is Liz Sare, Kevin Hansen, I'm Krista Siringo. And we have two other representatives. So being the largest town in the five-town district, we have the largest number of seats on the board. And we are really grateful to have a few minutes to just share a little bit about what we've been working on on the school board. First, I'd like to just say how proud we all are of our schools. They are amazingly vibrant places. If you've been to a sporting event, a fine arts festival, open house at any one of the elementary schools, or any of the multitude of other events happening almost every day in our schools, you'll see the level of engagement of our students, the passion and commitment of our educators. And so we have a lot to be really proud of. And it is our work on the school board to ensure that our administrators have the support they need to continue that work. We're also really proud of the level of participation we've seen this past fall in the community engagement efforts that we've undertaken. Mari and Caleb both spoke to some of the challenges that we're facing on a statewide level that directly and significantly impact the way we're able to educate our children. Declining student enrollment is a really big factor, as are some increasing fixed costs, most notably in health insurance. So these things make it really challenging for us to do the important work we need to do to support our kids and educate them the way we feel they deserve. But we want to have as many voices at the table in helping us figure out how to address these challenges. And we think that they are not just unique to our school systems, but that some of these issues are felt in other aspects of our communities and thinking about how to make and sustain our towns and keep them vibrant. So we really welcome and encourage your participation and in sharing your voice. We'll be continuing to engage folks in the future as we think about what education might look like in the years ahead. So I'd like to just say a few words about the budget that we'll be voting on tomorrow. And in setting the target for this budget, the board weighed lots of different interests, community values, financial considerations, and our district's strategic plan and vision. This spending plan reflects our desire to maintain the programs and supports necessary to provide the best education for our students while ensuring we're financially stable. So you may or may not have had a chance to see the annual report, which is a little bit more schnazzy than in years past. We've got some great pictures of students and teachers, and then some really in-depth numbers. So this can also be found on the MUSD website, if you don't have a hard copy. And in here, you'll see that the projected numbers, so for expenses, our expenses are showing a 1.5, 4, 5% increase over last year. Our revenue decreased by 11.16% from last year. This is primarily due to this continued decline in student enrollment. Education spending, which is expenses minus revenue, showed an increase of 3.67%. And the way you'll see that on the ballot is in per-pupil spending, and so this is a 4.71% increase from last year. So these are increases, but considering the 11 or 12% increase in healthcare, we feel we've done a really good job of ensuring that we're maintaining our programs and supports while recognizing some of these significant financial challenges. So in addition to voting on the budget tomorrow, which is Article 11, we're also going to ask you to vote on Article 10. And so in that article, we are asking to create an education reserve fund. So we will be asking to place $250,000 of our audited fund balance in this fund, and the remaining $500,000 of our fund balance will go to offset taxes. So by creating this fund, this allows us to set money aside, different from a capital reserve fund, a little more flexibility for us to apply those funds with unanticipated needs that might come up. On the district website, you'll see lots more detail about the line items, the increases and decreases in different areas, but that's sort of a rough sketch of what the budget is looking like this year. And we, I think we'll all be here for questions that you can address at the end of the meeting. I think that's it. Did you guys want to add anything else?
The thing to remember with our, how we disperse this fund balance is, the administration is recommending to apply $500,000 to the budget, not the whole 750, in the sense that it could become problematic for the following year if we don't sustain that fund balance. So their strategy and the board is in total agreement to take 250 aside and use 500,000 to apply towards the next year's budget, because that's a more manageable number to compensate for, depending on how the fund balance for this coming year may be derived or may end up being. And that would be a lot, lot less to make up, if you will, if the fund balance for the current year is not, not at the same level as the past year, if that makes any sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, if you'd all please rise, will we cite the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on nation, on God, and visible for the liberty to judge us for our wrongs. We have two young men here tonight, both scouts. We have Aiden Harris, I think on my right, your left, and Finn Harris, I think they're brothers, you know? And Aiden, Finn, pretty Irish, on your right. They both have mics. And when I recognize people in the assembly, they are going to rush a mic to you. And we want you to use those mics so everyone can hear clearly. And I know Jen, and I would appreciate if you tell us who you are also, for the record, prior to speaking. Okay. Are there any people in the hall who are not registered voters in the town of Bristol? Please, raise your hands. Okay. We're in pretty good shape that way. For those few that did, you cannot have discussion or vote on any articles. I'm sure you probably knew that before you came in. This year's town report has been dedicated to Craig Scribber. I don't think Craig is here today, are you? No, he's not. He's chilling. He's been involved in the community most of his adult life, and I think the select board felt after decades of service, he deserves some recognition. We also have a memorial page in our town report for George Smith, who passed away to the Lord in November. And you can read a little bit about those two gentlemen at the very beginning of the report. On the stage, we have Jen Myers to my left. She's recording, and she's your town clerk treasurer. We have Valerie Capels, who is our town administrator. And I'm going to take care of some business right now. Valerie is a resident of Waitsfield or Warren, one of those two nice downs. Does anyone have a problem with her speaking, to give us facts and the like? Great. So we're all set there. Joel Bouvier is the select board chair, Peker Heffernan, Peter Coffey, Ian Albertson, Michelle, and Michelle Purley. I can't see you, Michelle. I should know better. All right. Prior to me starting the articles, I'd just like to go over a few of Robert's Rules of Orders, which is what we conduct our meeting under. It might be especially useful for those of you that haven't been here often, or this is your first time. I must read the article as we go through the warning. Someone must move it and second it, and only then can we really start to discuss things in the article and move forward. An article can be amended. There's only one amendment allowed at a time on the articles. Once you have spoken to a specific article or an amendment, I'm going to make sure to recognize others that want to speak before I get around back to you. So be patient. And supposedly, you're only allowed to speak twice to an article. We'll use common sense in that regard, I think, unless someone objects strenuously. A division of the House is someone requesting we have a vote, other than a voice vote. Most of the articles, we vote by, you know, yea or nay. If it's close, or someone feels they would like something more precise, a division of the House is what is called. Stand up and ask for it. You can ask for it before vote, or you can even ask for it after vote, as long as we haven't gone to the next article, and we'll have a stand-up vote and people will count. A paper ballot, which we haven't had in a while, that also can be requested by a member of the Assembly in the same fashion, by standing and asking for it. We need at least seven other members of the Assembly to say that's okay, before we get out the paper and pencils and go through that. But sometimes people feel things in private are better. A debate on an article or an amendment can be cut off if someone calls a question. In the old days, someone could stand up and just shout it out, or if they did, that's not permitted. That's not kosher. One must be recognized, as anyone else would be when we're discussing, and then they may ask for that question to be called, and two-thirds of you have to say that's okay, that you agree we should move on and vote. Please remember, all remarks and comments should be addressed to the moderator. We don't want you talking to each other out there. There's a great risk of perhaps some impoliteness and things being said that might not want to be said, and I'm not going to tolerate that. We want everyone to address things to the moderator. It makes for a really smooth situation, and I can take it if you're upset, you know? You can give it to me. And the last, the last point I wanted to make was that I serve at your pleasure. So if you feel I'm making a mistake, and sometimes I do, maybe it's procedurally, maybe it's with an opinion on something, please, you know, stay pointed order, and we'll flush it out, so we can make sure your will is what we do here today. Okay. I think I covered it all. With that, the legal voters of the town of Bristol are hereby warned and notified to meet at Holy Hall in said Bristol on Monday, March 2, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. Said meeting will recess at the close of all business and to be transacted from the floor to the following day, Tuesday, March 3, 2020, for voting by Australian ballot between the hours of 7:00 a.m., at which time the polls will be opened in 7:00 p.m., at which time the polls will be closed for the election of officers, voting on those so noticed. That was all one sentence. That's a long sentence. Okay. Article one, do you hear the reports of the town officers? Do I have motion?
I will accept them.
Second?
Second.
Okay. At this time, we have reports listed in the index. Many of the subjects with those reports cover will not be discussed at town meeting. You won't have an opportunity to bring them up. This is your chance, starting with the Cemetery Association, well, I think we'll be talking about that, and going through certainly the revolving loan committee report. If anyone has a question or thought on any of those reports, speak now. Otherwise, we'll vote to accept the reports and move on. Okay. Please identify yourself, Craig.
Can you hear me? Greg Allen. Have a question. I'm not sure, Fred, on page 12 of the fund budget, would you consider that part of the report, or want to...
Well, you can ask it now, or you can ask it when we discuss the budget.
Thank you. Page 12, top, delinquent tax line, 227,257 on the actual column, sort of in the center for 2018, 19, and then 1920 at 75,000. I just wonder, is revenue coming in? The delinquents' tax report on page 24, and roughly that page in the past, has never had an amount on it in excess of 50,000. So where are we, 227,000 appear from? I have another question, I'll jump in on this later.
Okay. I think Jen can help us.
So the 227,000 figure is actually an audit adjustment, which is why that's in there. The delinquent tax report is actually something different than what's reported there in the revenues. The delinquent tax report states the outstanding delinquent taxes for the town of Bristol, and what you're referring to are the revenues collected for delinquent taxes.
Does that answer your question, Craig?
Well, but the delinquent taxes would flow from... The delinquent taxes would flow from the report. So unless taxes are being determined, delinquent, at various points during the year, you're never going to recover more than what's delinquent at the point the report is made to us. Now, there may be an audit adjustment. However, I also, that brings up the point that farther on, it's mentioned that the auditor's report by the CPA firm is posted on the town website. However, I looked and looked and looked, and I cannot find a link to the auditor's report for any year, including this year.
On page 24, we have the delinquent tax report.
Correct.
And as of 12, the 12th of January, there was 43,183 dollars and change, delinquent. I think the 200-plus-thousand figure, if I could interpret what Jen said, had to do with delinquent taxes paid up to whatever date that audit was done. So they're really two different numbers. Delinquent, as we speak, is probably not even 43 grand now, but that's what it was but that's what it was the first of the year. And we had collected monies. People didn't quite make it on time, I guess.
No, I understand, but I don't wanna take everyone's time. But when you make a report of delinquent taxes as of a certain point, with my understanding, that's the point they're determined to be delinquent, not, you know, six months later during the year, you're only delinquent at one point. I understand there'd be an audit adjustment, but that's a huge audit adjustment when delinquent taxes at any given point are only, you know, forty to fifty thousand.
Sure.
That would seemingly deserve some explanation of why that comes in, because it has an impact on the net gain or the town's fund balance, which again, I don't see the audit report linked on the town website. Now, it says we can get a copy, and that's my fault for not having gotten one, but...
So the current audit is in a draft status, which I'd be happy to provide a copy of to you. And all of the other preceding audit reports are on the town website. Off the top of my head, I couldn't direct you to where they are, but I'd be happy to help you or provide them to you if you'd like to come to the office.
Yeah, Craig, maybe coming to the office and speaking to Jen would be good.
Say to the simple folks that there's no obvious link when you go to, you know, Bristol BT. There's no obvious link for audit report. Just help, you know, to have that made obvious for folks.
You had another question?
Uh, let's see, the, oh. Actually, Fred, the revolving loan fund. There's no mention this year or in last year's report, I believe it was reported in the Addison Independent, that there was a significant bankruptcy, actually by a Waitsfield firm that wiped out a loan by the loan fund.
Yes, there was about, I think it was forty grand?
Forty, yeah, it was a significant number.
It was a little over seventy grand. It was a person from Waitsfield-Warn that was gonna make cookies through the Bristol Works and the bakery operation over there, and she went bankrupt.
Right, there's no mention of the significant, that significant activity in the report. This is taxpayer dollars that are gone, cannot be recouped in any fashion.
Those dollars indirectly, they're taxpayer dollars, federal money.
Yes.
And yes, perhaps it's an oversight not to have mentioned that in probably last year's report would have been the one that it should have been mentioned in.
I wasn't sure, but it's also a question for the fund then, why you're loaning money to someone that's not a Bristol resident.
We're permitted to, and the manufacturing of the cookies were gonna be done here in Bristol, and it meant jobs, and hopefully an economic opportunity for the operation that exists over in the Bristol Works. That's what we chose to do. And I won't get into the nitty-gritty, but it was a mistake. Any other questions under Article One? Ken, definitely.
Ken Weston. Page 26. I'm just wondering why Andrew Johnson's money is just rolled over into the general fund rather than having a fund set up on its own, under its own name, as the other funds are. It's right at the top of the page, it says, Town General Fund, including sales Stony Hill and including the A. Johnson Estate money.
So Ken, at a board meeting, the board did agree to keep the Andrew Johnson money separate and invest that for a specific purpose. The auditor said that because we have voters, had not restricted the fund money, it had to be included in our entire general fund balance. So that's why it is included like that, but I assure you that the money is invested, and the Select Board's intent for using the money is for a specific purpose.
I guess I still don't quite understand why, when you look at the next page, there are other private funds that were set up under their own name, and I just wonder what the difference is.
You establish those funds as voters here at a town meeting.
Okay.
I have several...
Please tell us who you are.
Oh yes, my name's Robert Bernstein. I have several notes, and I'll run them through quickly. I also have a copy of these notes. Thank you, I have several notes. I'll run them through quickly. I have a copy of these notes to give to the Select Board, and I think in general, these notes on the town reports all pertain mostly to the Select Board. Thank you. First, I'd like to mention my concerns about the use of executive session in Select Board meetings. Seems to be increasing, as we know there are statutory restrictions and statutory on the use, and I'm sure we're doing the right thing. But I see that in all the Select Board agendas, there's, I believe in all of them this year, there's been a use of, a proposed use of executive session. So all I'd like to say is, the Select Board should think very carefully about doing things in private when they can be done in public if there is that question. There often is a question. And since I know the use is increasing, I know that we were able to do it without this before. Okay? Perhaps related to this is the way that the employees of the town of Bristol are supervised by the Board, the Select Board, rather than a manager, which was the way we used to do this in the past, long past, by the way, not anything recent. Because of that, I think we're forced into executive session at Select Board meetings, and I think that that's probably not a good use of Select Board time. It could be used in other deliberations. I'd love to see the Select Board figure out a way to have staff manage work and employees, rather than the Select Board at least as much as they do, or seem to do. I'd like to mention also the town question of the police funding, the police that only serve a certain district within the town. I did attend the police meeting this year to say that I think that the funding of the police is unsustainable with the district as now. And I'd like to mention in front of this group, since this is going to be a town question, and has been, that we need to continue work and keep this on the agenda to figure out how to properly fund our very good police force. I'd like to mention that there are fourteen capital reserve funds listed in this town report, page 27 through 29. Some of them are not really capital expenses, I don't believe. They regard items too small, not capital, and some of these seem redundant. So that I'd like to propose that the Select Board think about eliminating some of these and consolidating them so they can be better understood by taxpayers. I do have a list of these in this, I won't bother the general Assembly with that, but I'd like to have the Select Board think diligently about this. Let's see, I have only two other things to say. One is, I'm embarrassed to say it, but I'd like the Select Board to work hard to think over the question about the recurrent flooding at Fitch Avenue and Fitch Street and North Avenue. I know it floods there more now than ever before, especially since we repaved and changed the grade of Fitch Avenue. I know it does because my house is one that floods. I'm a little embarrassed to bring that somewhat personal thing up, but I am glad to do it in front of all of us so you can know that you need to think about it. And lastly, I'd just like to thank the Select Board and the Administrator for their thoughtful report on pages 31 to 41. And I'd like to thank them for their work in helping to make the town I've now lived in for 22 years such a fine place to live and work. Thank you.
Any other people like to speak to Article One? Seeing none. All those, oops. Okay. Chair would like to speak for a second?
Bob, just for, the board does realize the water problem on coming off the mountain on Mount Street School or Bristol Elementary. And we are addressing it, we did get a grant for some, doing some work with Unified School District in the playground area to put some drainage that comes down off of the mountain, goes down to the parking lot. This is not counting the one down by the big one that comes off down by the lower end of the school, but we are addressing that issue. And I will assure you that our Administrator does the day-to-day operations for our department, with our department heads, not the Board. Thank you.
Speaking, Craig, speaking to your finding the forums on the website, you can use the documents and forums link at the top of the webpage, and it's under Treasurer slash Clerk. That's where you'll find the audit reports for past years.
I thought for sure Joel would still be talking when I...
Any other comments on Article One? Seeing none. All those in favor of the reports as is in the town, of the town officers, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Article Two. To elect town offices by Australian ballot. Okay? Second? We really don't need to vote on this. But what, this is an opportunity for those running for town office to, if they wish, get up. You have a chance to see who they are. No politicking, you know, a minute or so to say something about it. You don't need to, or you may not choose to. I believe also there's someone running for the school board, and also not a school meeting, I think it's probably appropriate, assuming no one has an objection if that person just says aye as well. Okay, having said that, yes, sir, please tell us who you are, speak to the mic.
I don't know if I really need a microphone, I've just gotta say hello. My name is Bill Mount. Many of you look at me like I got two heads, listen to me like a guy from around here, and I'm not. I do live here, we chose to live here, my wife and myself, and we're raising two boys here. Previously, I raised an older son here, who went to school at Mount A. Very active in sports and other community events, and just lucky to know that I am part of your community, that we've chosen to be here, and I intend to be here for quite some time. Would love the opportunity to chat with you one-on-one. If you have any questions, I'll be here throughout the night, and thank you, I appreciate your consideration.
Yes, Darla.
Hi, I'm Darla Senical, I'm also running for Select Board. I've lived here in town for 37 years. I know many of you from many different events and boards and other activities, and through the Rec Department. Bristol's been my home for a long time, and it'll remain to be my home for a long time, and I hope to take my experiences and to the next level and serve you as a Select Board member. Thank you.
David.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Dave Sharp. We built our home here, Pat and I built our home here in 1971, and we raised two boys, who both went to Bristol Elementary School in Mount A. And I would like to serve this community in a three-year position on the town school, on the Mount Abraham Union School District School Board. Currently, there's no name on the ballot, so you'd need to write in my name, and I would very much appreciate it if you would write in Dave Sharp for that position. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, ladies. We'll move on to Article Three. While the voters of the town of Bristol vote that all real property taxes payable in installments shall bear interest at a rate of three-quarters of one percent per month, or a fraction thereof for the first three months, and thereafter, one and one-quarter percent per month, or a fraction thereof from the due date of each installment, with the payment to the town treasurer of real property taxes for the town fiscal year period July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, being due in two equal installments on November 5th, 2020, April 5th, 2021, by physical delivery to the town office before midnight on that date. Do I have a motion to move the article?
So moved.
So moved, that was Michelle. Second? Discussion on Article Three, which basically sets our dates and some percentages for paying our property taxes. Seeing no questions? I'll read the article again and we'll vote on it. While the voters of the town of Bristol vote that all real property taxes payable in installment shall bear interest at a rate of three-quarters of one percent per month or a fraction thereof for the first three months, and thereafter, one and one-quarter percent per month or a fraction thereof from the due date of each installment with the payment to the town treasurer of real property taxes for the town's fiscal year period July 1st of 2020 through June 30th, 2021, being due in two equal installments on November 5th, 2020, and April 5th, 2021, by physical delivery to the town offices before midnight on that date. All in favor of Article Three as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Pass on Article Three. Article Four. Will the town limit the amount of penalty charged by the collector of delinquent taxes for payments made after the due date? For payments to six, for payments to six percent of the tax collected pursuant to 32 VSA, et cetera, et cetera. Would someone move Article Four?
Move, discuss this?
We can, after we've moved it, seconded it. Move it?
Ask.
Seconded it, okay. Now, discussion on Article Four is certainly appropriate.
I'm Chuck Richardson, I own a house on Elm Street. Now, I'm Chuck Richardson, I own a house on Elm Street. We keep voting this back to four percent every year, and now we're back, somebody's got it in here to go to six percent again? Why would that be? We're asking people who get behind on their bills to pay more. Makes no sense to me.
Michelle.
By state statute, it goes back to eight percent every year, so you have to physically vote every year to put it back to whatever percentage it is, whatever percentage people agree to do.
So, last proposed for six percent instead of the four percent that we were allowed here the year before?
The decision of the Select Board being, we were talking about this, you guys can make whatever option you want.
So, you have a proposal in the article for a six percent penalty, I guess. Michelle indicated that the state says we have to vote this every year. I think the Select Board made a decision not to make it eight, but to make it six, and as she stated, that's, it's the pleasure of the Assembly as to how you'd like to move forward on this, or what you'd like to do. Yes?
Ken Weston?
Thank you.
I seem to remember us talking about this before. When it was eight percent, we first started moving it down, and as I recall, it went to four percent. And I don't know... And I don't know at this point in time, for the kind of people that are having trouble with their taxes, why are we pushing this back up to six percent? I think I would like to make amendment to the article.
And that would be?
I would move that the percentage could change to four percent rather than six percent.
So leave the article as is, but change the payment to four percent of the tax collected, et cetera? Is that correct? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion on the amendment. Okay? So. First, we're gonna vote on the amendment, which changes the article to a four percent of the tax collected pursuant to the appropriate state statutes. All those in favor of that amendment?
Right.
Yes?
Discussion on the article?
Uh, yeah, you've got it under the wire.
I didn't see the wire. This is Andy Jackson. I was just wondering if any member of the select board would like to speak as to why they felt six percent would be appropriate this year, rather than the four percent, so that we might have the benefit of their wisdom?
I'm not sure I call it wisdom. Last year, we didn't vote on this, if I recall correctly. And so it was eight percent last year. When we realized that the state statute required to go back up to eight percent, the select board decided, well, we're not gonna make it eight. Should we make it four? They just decided to put in six as the middle number. No specific reason.
Okay?
I'd just like to point out, I'd just like to point out to the assembly, the select board did discuss this on page.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. Thirty-seven.
Any other questions on the amendment? Right down here.
So I'd like to suggest that even at four percent, it's much higher penalty than if you're a daily with your credit card payment. If you're, this four percent figure is in addition to the interest charges that we voted on in the previous pay, in the previous article. So this is a one-time fee to be an hour late to pay your taxes, your property taxes. It's onerous, I believe. I was delighted in the article, previous article, because I thought it took the place of the eight percent penalty, but I was incorrect.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor of the amendment to make the percentage to collect on delinquent taxes four percent, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Believe the ayes have it? The ayes appear to have it when you pass that amendment. Now, I'll read Article Four as amended. Will the town limit the amount of penalty charged by the collector of delinquent taxes for payments made after the due date for payments to six, four percent of the tax collected pursuant to thirty-two VSA, et cetera? Those in favor of Article Four as amended?
Is there no discussion at this point?
You can have discussion, yes. Do you have a question, anybody?
Yes, I have a question.
Face me, Bob.
Thank you. It's kind of a point of order, but this article is phrased to limit the amount of the penalty. Shouldn't it say, set the amount of the penalty? And if so, I propose that we amend it to say that.
Yes. All right, we have an amendment. Let's, let's, let's get the gentleman's amendment on the floor. We have an amendment to change the word limit to.
I said set.
Set. Okay?
Actually being is limited, it could be.
Let's get a second, Bob.
Thank you, second.
Who's gonna second? Okay, we have a second. Any discussion on changing that word from limit to set? Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you. I don't mean to make a fuss about this, but it, the limit could be a that or less. If you want to set it, we ought to set it.
Okay? Any thoughts, questions from the assembly on that amendment? Okay, seeing none. Those in favor of changing limit to set? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. We've changed the word. So Article Four now reads, as amended, second time. Will the town set the amount of penalty charged by the collector of delinquent taxes for payments made after the due date for payment to four percent of the tax collected pursuant to thirty-two VSA, et cetera? All those in favor, any discussion on the article as has been amended? Yes? Hang on.
So.
Tell us who you are.
I'm getting it.
Okay.
Simone Scari, Bristol. And I have a question, I guess, for the select board as to why they chose that verb limit. And is it beneficial to have it be at the discretion of the collector in case, you know, somebody can't pay the four percent penalty? And it gives the collector the discretion to charge them three percent? I don't know. Thank you.
Are you speaking specifically to the word limit, Simone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Point of order, haven't we already voted on this?
No, we gotta redo it after it's been amended.
We voted on the amendment.
We voted on the.
On the amendment. Now we go to the, back to the original article as amended. Does seem duplicative, but it's the way we do it with Robert's rules. Any other comments? Okay? Valerie?
The language from the article came from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns.
Okay?
Another point of clarification is that the delinquent tax collector is a position that's appointed by the select board. Therefore, there's no ability for the collector to adjust or make any kind of changes on a per pupil basis, because they're not collecting the interest and penalty received for the delinquent taxes. All of that money comes to the town, and the position is a stipend position that's issued through the town.
Yes? Young lady there.
Hi, Melanie Hessler, Maple Street. Is there options for payment plans? So if someone that can pay the taxes and they knew they couldn't, is there an option for them to come in and negotiate with the town to come up with a plan that would work for them?
Absolutely.
Patty Heatherly. I'm confused, Jen, about what you just said, that the penalty goes to a certain fund?
Sorry, Patty, it doesn't go to a fund. But if you're an actual delinquent tax collector who's voted on, in some towns, you receive any penalty and interest, so you do have the ability to negotiate that penalty and interest on a per pupil basis. Because I'm an appointed delinquent tax collector, I receive a flat stipend rate to, to be the delinquent tax collector, and any penalty and interest collected comes to the town as a revenue.
The other question I have, and I asked it maybe a couple of years ago, was, does this work?
Well, Patty, I think I remember you asking that question a couple of years ago. And I can remember sitting in the back and asking why we got four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars worth of delinquent taxes back then. David probably can remember those days when we used to have a huge, half, almost half a million dollars in delinquent taxes. Is this the right way to do it? I'm not sure, but it does work. What is the page in the back say? Forty-eight thousand dollars? With delinquent taxes? None of us like to pay them, I agree. They have to do it to run the town and the school.
Okay, is that clear for you, Patty? You get it?
Yeah, well, I don't get it, but it's all right. Something to do and another, and I personally like to pay my taxes because it's part of my community, doing something for the community. So it's a good performance.
This may help. Not that many years ago, when we elected our, our tax collector, they were compensated based on the collection of taxes they paid. It was an income to them. And as Jen said, there could be even negotiations relative to the maximum rates that was allowed to be charged. That was all changed not too long ago, when the select board appoints. And, and no longer does the tax collector get compensated at all from the delinquent taxes they collect. And indeed, the numbers today are far lower than they were under the former system. It seems to me to verify the systems a little bit better. Seeing no more hands, we'll vote on Article Four as amendment. Will the town set the amount of penalty charged by the collector of delinquent taxes for payments made after the due date, for the payment to four percent of the tax collected pursuant to thirty-two VSA, et cetera? All those in favor of the article as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Article Five. To set salaries that should be paid to the members of the select board. Do I have a motion to at least move on and do this? Second? Okay. What do we want to make the salaries for our select board members?
Sorry. Ken Weston. Could I just ask, before I offer an amendment, as to what present salary they're?
Five hundred dollars a year, plus fifteen dollars a meeting.
That was five hundred a year, fifteen dollars a meeting.
I would like to offer a amended version of that vote, that we pay the same as previous years, with the addition that the chairman of the board receive an additional ten dollars per meeting.
Okay, so amendment has, it's not amended, but in a sense. But we want to make Article Five such that the select board gets paid to five hundred dollars a year and twenty-five dollars a meeting, with the exception of the chair who would make an extra ten? An extra ten. Do I have a second to that? Fifteen, excuse me, thank you. Do I have a second? You said ten.
An extra, so is that?
An extra, so it'd be thirty-five for the chair.
We get fifteen dollars a meeting, plus five hundred dollars.
I guess I'm making it too much for you guys.
You want to keep the salaries for the four select board the same and raise twenty-five dollars a meeting for the chair?
Okay.
Is that what I'm getting at, Ken?
Sounds good. Sounds clean. Good. And did I have a second for that accurately?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none. Will set the salaries to be paid to the members of the select board the same as the previous year, with the exception of twenty-five dollars being paid to the chair? Each meeting? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Article Five is approved with salaries from the select board. Article Six. Will the voters of the town of Bristol authorize the select board to appoint two, uh, a, will appoint a town clerk, as provided in seventeen VSA, twenty-six fifty-one E? Do I have some who move that? Michelle, second? Second. Article Six. Discussion, questions?
This is Barbara Miles. I just want to thank the select board, because that's a ridiculously low salary. And you all put in so much time and so much energy serving this community. And we're really grateful to you. Thank you so much.
Good. Any, any, any questions in allowing the select board to appoint the town clerk who is currently elected by you all? Right there.
Thank you. If the select board and the town here thinks that this is a good idea, I'm not much against it. But I am to a certain extent, because I see it as another move away from old-fashioned New England town democracy. And I feel strongly that we ought to hold on to as much of that that still meets modern needs as we can. So to start the discussion, I'd like to say, again, I'm not so much against it, because I can see that you want it, and you probably want it for good reasons. And by the way, it's discussed in the select board's report here. But I see it as another change away from our old-fashioned town meeting democracy. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on changing the mode where we select our town clerk? Okay, Craig. Finn?
Hi, Craig Alligan. Does this mean, though, that the, the select board would in fact, forever onwards, appoint that, appoint that position? Or it's, you know, up in the air each year, whether we could vote on it? Or this is the, this is the end of ever voting, like Bob says? It seems a little iffy to, you know, get away from voting.
Okay, Valerie, I think would like to respond.
The state statute was amended a couple of years ago to allow the select boards to make these appointments. Prior to that, it required a charter change. And that statute was changed to reflect the needs of, or the, the trends of other municipalities going in that direction of amending their charters. The, the way the statute reads, if approved, then it's not something that's voted every year, but the positions would remain appointed until voters choose to go back to an elected position. So the voters would have an opportunity, if they desire, to put it back on the morning for a future vote, if you want to go back to the other way.
Okay, any other questions? Yes?
I'd like to offer an amendment.
Okay?
If it be a new sentence, it would say, this authorization would be valid only in the event that no resident of the town files for the office.
So. Will the voters of the town of Bristol authorize the select board to appoint a town clerk, as provided, only if no member of the community or the Bristol, no.
In the event that no resident files for the office.
In the event of no resident. Applies for the job.
Files for the office.
Files for the office.
Files for, for election.
Okay? Okay? You have a second, Andy Jackson. So. The article has been amended to say, will the voters of the town of Bristol authorize the select board to appoint a clerk, as provided, except in the event, or in the. to appoint a clerk as provided except in the event, or in the event..." I'm trying to get that wording right today, Ken. As provided in this chapter unless, or unless there's an event of a resident that files for the office?
As I presented the amendment, I said it would be a new sentence.
A new sentence. Okay.
This authorization be valid only in the event that a resident files for the office. Does not, I'm sorry, yes. Does not file for the office.
All right, so, I got it. The, hang on, hang on a second, I want to get this amendment which was seconded accurate. "Will the voters of the town of Bristol authorize the Select Board to appoint a town clerk as provided in seventeen VSA, et cetera?" This period, this authorization is valid only in the event of no resident filing for the office. Okay, that's what we've got. I suspect we'll have some discussion, a Select Board member want to kick that off?
Yes, understand your, your point on this, Ken, but one of the reasons that the Board chose to go in this direction is to be sure that we get a qualified person. Under what you're proposing, if only one person from Bristol puts their name in and has zero ability to do this job, our hands would be tied to appoint them.
Any other, yes, right here?
Bob Donus. If this article is defeated, then does that mean we go back to voting for the town clerk?
If the article is amended, is defeated, we go back to the original article. And if that is defeated, yes, I think we would end up keeping the system the way it currently is.
I think we should make it clear that the Board has no desire to change the clerk, or the treasurer that we have now. The, the issue is that we just want to make sure in the future that we, we handle a lot of money and we don't want to end up with an unqualified person there.
In the back. Finn?
Hey. Bill Brown up for being wrote. I think the way the Select Board wrote it is the way it should go. Because it's very efficient, we know Jen is a crackerjack, we want to have her stay there. And the fact that, as you said, you handle a lot of money, we need somebody with experience. And who's better to make this judgment than the Select Board?
Anyone else like to speak to the amendment? Yes, down here in the front.
Matt Daley. My question is just if we, so, if we vote down the amendment and pass it as written, that allows the Select Board to also, in theory, choose someone who lives outside of Bristol? Whereas if we defeat this as written, not amended, we are restricted to only residents of Bristol who could run for town clerk?
That's correct. That's correct, according to our town clerk.
Okay. Thank you.
Then, there you go, Finn. Don't go for it.
Bill Mel. Did you hear that okay? One of the things that I pointed out, and one of the reasons that I was running, is that you, the people of Bristol, run this town. And the way that you run it is by electing representatives, these fine people up here, to vote and to do the things, the way that you would do them if you had the opportunity. That being the case, it kind of goes to having the people here making that decision or kind of doing it through the way that you voted to have them up there. Does that make sense? In other words, you vote for somebody that you trust to make the decision, and allow them to make the decision.
Right there. Aiden? It's a race, it's a race.
And the Boy Scouts won. I just like to ask, you know, generally speaking, the Select Board puts forward proposals like this to solve a problem. And I just wondered what problem you're trying to solve.
Presently, we, we'd like to just separate the two positions. And our town clerk and treasurer support this.
Currently, the clerk and the treasurer is the same person.
That's correct.
And you're looking to make them individual people in both positions, rather than one?
She's on the ballot for both tomorrow. If these two articles fail, she will continue to serve. And she, we, the Board presented this so we could have separation in the two positions. And she is, supports this.
That gentleman next to Ken, right there.
I'm Chuck Richardson. On page thirty-eight, there's a clarification for this that I think helped clear it up for me. Sharon Lucia's been doing a hell of a good job for us, but she doesn't live in Bristol. So if you go to page thirty-eight and read, what we're basically doing is they're trying to make it so that we can have somebody who's already doing a great job for us, but doesn't live in town, except that position. Mike, clear on that goal now?
You're correct.
Thank you.
Who else? I think you haven't spoken on this yet, Bob.
We can still have the town vote, the two positions separately if we remain voting. As to the fact that we, this is, how do you say this? We've been doing it one way for two hundred years, okay? It seems to have worked. That doesn't mean that it shouldn't be changed, but that should be taken into good consideration.
Steve over here.
Steve Leopold from Bristol. If we do separate the two positions, who will select the treasurers that we're looking for? And what would their qualifications need to be?
I think that's the next article, Steve. And the Select Board's proposing there that they would as well. We'll get to that one. All right, the young lady back there.
Hi, I'm Missy Holland, I live on Brakes Hill Road. I guess my observation is not, is more of one of process, but it doesn't seem to me to be necessarily a good decision in terms of governance to change the way we do things because of a particular present personnel situation. It has nothing to do with whether the person who's doing it now is wonderful, which I don't doubt at all. But we're talking about upending a two-hundred-year process for a very particular situation, which doesn't seem, I think there must be a different way to do that.
Just a point of where, are we discussing the amendment?
Yes, we're discussing the amendment that has the change concerning in the event of a resident. I think the discussion has been appropriate so far. The gentleman right behind you.
Andy Jackson. But the amendment, or if the reason why you're doing this, you don't want to have two people acting as the same, same role. The proposed amendment would not prevent that because the Board could appoint the same person. So it doesn't seem to get at the purpose of it.
Ken?
Well, I, I feel strongly that the job as treasurer and clerk has become more complicated over the years. I've been working with town clerks in Bristol since nineteen sixty, and I've never seen a bad town clerk. I think that your idea of separating the two jobs is valid. But I think the town clerk, as a person and as a representative of the people in the town, serves a more of a social status than the treasurer does. And, and I think if we were going to choose to elect one and appoint the other, I would choose to elect the town clerk and appoint the treasurer.
Back there?
Hi, my name is Beth Eckers, and I, I was wondering if maybe we considered Ken's amendment but added the word qualified somehow? Someone in Bristol who is qualified, whatever that might mean, and who, who would determine that would be someone else's guess, but I think that might help clarify things.
I guess why I disagree, Ken, you and I have been on a lot of boards, and what I disagree with this one tonight is, about the amendment I disagree with, Ken, is if we had a very qualified person as our town clerk, and our assistant and our town clerk are highly qualified, and what we want to do is name our assistant the town clerk, but she's not a resident of Bristol, think of that, that she might have that job for a year and then I wanted the job next year and I apply for it because I'm a resident and I go take a petition now and I'm the only one. That's why, I'm not sure in years coming up, we'd get a qualified person to say, well, I'm out of town, but I'm very, very qualified, but somebody next year could run against me and I'm not, I can't even, I gotta walk away, so to speak, because that one person got elected because they were resident of Bristol. I, I have some issue with that, that's all, Ken.
Yes, can you speak up? Okay, cool. Who are you?
I'm sorry, I'm Joelle Logan, I live on Lower Knutford. I don't think we should be hanging on to this as a, as a nostalgia thing, like we've done this for two hundred years, because things have evolved. I'm the daughter of a, of a town clerk and treasurer in Middlebury for twenty-five years. And things have changed a lot, and I, I think the, the skills are much more specific for the town clerk than they, than they used to be. And we need to find a very qualified person for that job. So I'm, I'm a fan of not amending it and passing it.
Okay. One more time, Ken.
I would offer to withdraw the amendment if we, as a body, agreed to turn the first article down and accept the second article regarding the treasurer.
I don't think we can do that. I can't predict what's going to happen. Nice try. Yes, the young lady in the, there you go.
So I just have a question about...
And just tell the show name again.
Simon Skerritt, Bristol. And I just was wondering if the article were to pass as it stands, in its original form, whoever the can, I mean, people would have to apply for the job, right? Like going down the road. I mean, for, for this year, it looks like you would appoint the assistant town clerk to be the town clerk for the time being. But I would imagine in the future that anybody who wants that job would have to apply for it. I mean, you're not going to just cherry pick somebody, right?
I think there's a process that they have to ref, to follow that would have it advertised and people would apply.
So a local resident could apply, or a non-local resident? I mean, a resident could apply, or a non-resident could apply?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
One more time, Bob.
Thank you. I, I'm confused by the amendment, and I'm speaking of the amendment only at this point. I think the amendment says if someone applies, then we'll have an election. But if I understand what the proposal is, it's for this year, and, and we only have the people running this year, and then there's going to be an appointment, as it says, apparently, probably from statute in the Select Board report, they're going to make this appointment within forty-five days. So I can't see how the amendment will have any effect.
If, if the amendment is approved, I'm, I'm not sure what, what takes effect when. That's a, that's a legal question and I'm not, that's not my job.
What we're commiserating about is how the amendment would, would work procedurally because an appointed person would not submit a petition for being elected. And if an appointed person in the position, it wouldn't be open for election, basically. So it's, we're trying to figure out logistically how that would work if an appointed person was in the position around election time and how petitions would be solicited. And they almost seem contradictory.
Well, I think, are we not voting tomorrow for a town clerk and treasurer?
Correct.
So, people will vote tomorrow. I think it's a reasonable question to ask as a part of this amendment. Let's say the amendment is defeated and we go back to the original article. Do you have the authority to just appoint someone even though you have people that have been elected for the position?
The state statute is actually very brief. And once a point, well, the elected positions are voted tomorrow. And if these articles pass, then those elected positions expire after forty-five days. And an appointment will be made either at that point or before then. And once that appointment is made, it continues until it doesn't. Until the Select Board chooses to reverse the appointment or voters come back some other time and say, "We want to make this an elected position again." The Select Board could choose to, right now, those are one-year elected terms. The Select Board could choose to make it a three-year term. So there's that time period to consider as well.
So, the amendment, I'm, I'm want clarity here myself. If it's approved, is, is mute currently, correct? It would, it would not be effective because you've done the forty-five day thing and you've appointed someone. And there's no chance for another election unless there's a special town meeting or something like that, or people wait till next year and go through the motions of reversing things. Is that fair? Is that accurate? Someone help me out with this. Dave?
I'm sitting here, as you are, trying to figure out how this would work, and I'm not sure it does. So I'd like to propose a replacement amendment. Is that permissible at this time?
You, you can have an amendment to the amendment, as permitted.
Okay. My amendment to the amendment is to replace the amendment made, that's currently on the table, with a requirement that the provision, that they, in five years' time, five years from now, there is on the town meeting agenda this same question, whether we choose to appoint or elect the town clerk. My notion here is that, my understanding is going forward, Jen would like to be the treasurer and the Select Board would like to appoint the current, the current assistant clerk, who's not a resident, to be the clerk. I think that's great. The Select Board has good judgment in this, I presume, in this. The select board has good judgment in this, I presume, in this move, but maybe the community has, should have the opportunity five years hence to decide whether this is working well or not, or whether we should return to electing our clerk. So that's my proposed amendment to the amendment.
All righty, so could it be that we keep the amendment as is, but put it the end in four years' time? That would make it five years, because we're doing it a year ahead. We would vote on this, or it's a, turn that off, Ken. Jesus, turn it off. Anyone else have theirs on? Turn it off.
Four years, five years, doesn't make that much difference to me. I just, my point is that, you know, I think there's some concern that I hear in the audience that this notion of the select board appointing a clerk may not be a good one, and we will have lost our ability to go back to electing the clerk. I'm putting, I'm proposing to put in place an ability for this town meeting to return to the system of electing a clerk five years hence. And we can all determine whether this process that the select board wants to put in place works or not.
I find it hard to amend the amendment in such a fashion. I think the way to get to that would be to defeat the amendment, and then have you propose this time position so that we revisit this again. I don't know how to word that, so that we would, we would make that work in five years. I'm not sure, quite frankly, that the amendment works at all as it is, given the election tomorrow and the 45-day period they speak of. I just don't know whether it flies. Yes, sir?
I'm still Chuck Richardson. What is the significance of this, anyway? Why does Sharon's title need to change? It seems to me, maybe I'm missing something important here, but if she's going to continue working there and showing up at the same time every day and doing the job she's doing, if all you're really doing is changing her job title, and we spent 40 minutes trying to figure this out, why is it important?
So the assistant clerk, Sharon, does a tremendous job, and Bristol would not operate nearly as effectively and efficiently without her, to start. But the clerk, an assistant clerk, at this point is doing things that the clerk is kind of asking and requesting. So at this point in time, Sharon has solely been focusing on her land records. This would really give her the ability to broaden, you know, her abilities and work elections and run the elections, which we have been working together most recently to do. It just gives, it really separates the duties, is really what it comes down to, Chuck, is that her as a clerk would do what the clerk duties were, and then myself as a treasurer would do what the treasurer duties were, in hopes to create a little bit more transparency in the office as far as getting some things done that perhaps get pushed to the back burner in the busyness of the day-to-day.
If I could add to that, another reason that might not be quite clear is that in this discussion, Jen would like to focus on the treasurer's position, which leaves the clerk position not Jen anymore, so it needs to be somebody else. And in order for Sharon to continue in that position, it would need to be an appointed position, because she's not a resident.
Well, what I'm wrestling with, the more I think about it, is the, how applicable this amendment is. I just don't think legally it works. I don't think, given what I've heard and the timing of things, that I think it would be thrown out. And, you know, and I'm tempted to can it. By the same token, I don't want to do that if you all feel real strongly about it in one sense, and we can let the legal authorities make a decision afterwards, but Ken, I'm, you know, given an election tomorrow, and potentially, if we go back, you know, I just don't see how that's, I just don't see how it's gonna work, I just don't. Anyone have any thoughts on this? Andy, do you?
Well, I don't know what your reasoning is, why you feel it would have no effect. Your authority is nil if Ken's amendment-
Passes.
-passes. You have the elected officials in place.
Well, that's why I ask. I do have the authority to not allow something that isn't applicable, or that, or I guess potentially that isn't legal, but I, but I'm tempted, I really don't want to be in a position to make legal decisions, so I'm conflicted.
What happens if Jen is elected, then she decides to retire right after the election? Who fills her position? The select board, I believe, right?
We would appoint somebody.
The way it is now.
Until the following.
Right, so that solves that problem pretty well, without a need for a vote.
Yes, we got a new hand here.
I'm just a quick point of order, John Muir's. Did Dave's amendment of the amendment, was that seconded?
No.
No. It wasn't permitted.
Okay, so that's off the table, and now we're talking about the amendment, and not the underlying question.
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to call a question.
Red, a question here. We got a few new people here. Let's, the gentleman behind Steve.
Same thing, call the question.
Oh, stand up. It doesn't matter.
We've been talking about this, Richard Boots, we've been talking about this long enough. I think we should vote on the amendment now. So I called a question.
I need two-thirds of, no, I recognize this gentleman first, he called the question. Two-thirds of you have to agree that we can end debate and vote on the amendment. So I'll ask, those that would like to call the question and move to a vote, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. I think clearly we're gonna vote on this amendment. So what we're voting on is an amendment that adds a sentence at the end of Article Six that says, "In the event of no, oh, the authorization that we are applying in the article is valid only in the event of no resident of the town of Bristol filing for the office." Okay? All those in favor of that amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Or the opposed, nay.
Nay.
Okay. Now we go back to the original article. Discussion here.
Thank you. Howard Jennings, Bristol. I am persuaded by Valerie's explanation that the state worked on this, and it has a rather elegant simplicity, which I think works. They must have considered this at some length, as compared to our ad hoc discussion on the floor here. And to me, it says pretty clearly, if this article is approved by the voters, that the elected positions, which we would elect tomorrow, will expire within 45 days or less if the select board chooses, and the appointed position would nullify that election and replace the elected officials. So the select board could go ahead and appoint, as the state, I think, intended to enable, the qualified candidates they choose. Does that make sense?
Accurate. Accurate. Right there.
I agree with that.
Who are we?
And I just want to-
Who are you?
Oh, Sally Burrell, sorry. I still like the idea of having some kind of community viewing of the process and input, like the forum that happened the other night. It was great for the community to come together and ask questions and get to know who, I mean, I don't, Sharon would be great, I'm just saying in the future, if, you know, if this was going to hold for the future as far as appointing, it would be great to have the opportunity, as a community, to have some sort of a forum or something, so that we could really meet the people who might be applying, and get to know them and ask questions. You know, I don't know what to say about that, as that would be an amendment.
Wendy Wilson. I think that it would be great for the select board to be able to hire a person to be the clerk or the treasurer. I also think it would be great if that person were a resident of this town, just like our select board members are residents of the town, and our moderators are resident of the town. My father was a police officer, he had to be a resident of the town. And I just think that's, I don't know, for some reason, I just think that's kind of important, and if there isn't a qualified resident of the town, then have at it.
Any other comments on Article Six as written? Yep?
Hi, John Muir's. I trust our town officials and our appointed and elected town officials, but, you know, in this current national political climate, I'm not looking for opportunities to have less sway over our elected officials, you know? A lot of that is already being consolidated at the national level, and quite frankly, if you have the power to hire the clerk, you have the power to fire the clerk. And to me, I think there's a benefit, I'm not sure I could touch it specifically, but I think there's a benefit to having an independently-minded clerk, who cannot be fired by the select board. And I think there's more accountability in that, and I think whomever it was who said, let's have a hired treasurer and retain an elected clerk, that sounds more right to me, but again, I just don't see, it's all too easy to give away our opportunities to hold elected officials accountable through the only means we really have to do so, which is the vote. And if we're just gonna blithely give that away, something that, if you want to talk about the quality of deliberation over time, I would look to the founders of the state or the town, who set that up after lots of deliberation. And there's a reason for that bifurcation, and I think, for my part, I would prefer it remain.
Okay, any other? Down here, right here, Finn.
I, uh-
Let's know who you are.
I would, I would side with the people-
Kevin Hanson.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin Hanson. I would side with the people that think that these positions have gotten complicated enough that they should be filled based on qualifications and the hiring process. All the, and the other, the other point that comes to mind is all the talk about voting and discourse through voting. Typically, a third of the town's voters are voting at town meeting day, so it's not representative of the town's wishes, it's representative of a minority position in the town.
Any other comments? Right here.
Hi, Carol Wells. Valerie, or I guess I'd like to ask Valerie through you, Fred. You had said that many towns have adopted this ability for the select board to appoint. Do you have, like, how many, what percentage of towns in Vermont?
I don't. It's not something that I have followed closely. I know personally of other towns that have done it in recent years, in large part, when faced with vacancies, the challenge of finding qualified people, especially within a small town, and if, when surrounded by other small towns, and if the qualified person happens to live just down the other side of the line. It gave select boards or city councils that capability of making an informed decision.
And you did say that the statute allows the voters to rescind this in future-
Yes.
-if after a few years.
It stays in effect until voters choose to undo it.
So we still have that power after a few years? Do you have, how would that happen? Would you have to collect signatures to get it on the article, or just request it?
It would be a petition warning article, or just like this, or the select board can choose to put it on the warning on their own initiative.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Craig Allen. I wonder if Dave is willing to put forward his amendment again? With a time period?
You're perfectly able to.
Can't remember what you said, Dave. I'm not good at the word. I can do numbers, but not words. But it would seem like putting a time limit of four years or something to bring it before us again would be useful.
Can I ask the question about what Dave said, the four or five years, whatever it is? You, as the voters of the town, can bring a petition to us at any time, so it doesn't have to be four years. I mean, if in two years you decide you don't think it's working-
Wait a minute, Craig.
You don't think it's working, then you can bring a petition or come to the select board and say, can we reconsider this?
Absolutely true, however, it's not the easiest thing to get those petitions together. Of course, that means the folks may not be interested, but it is simpler to just have it out there as a, you know, a deadline that has to happen.
Down here.
So to answer the question, you know, I thought if there was, you know, numbers of people that thought that was a good idea, they could stand up and make the amendment proposal themselves. I'm really conflicted about this. I think that, you know, that Sharon has done a wonderful job, her stepping forward as clerk is great, and the fact that she's outside of the town is problematic, and allowing the select board to appoint someone from outside the town is a good idea with regard to this particular individual. But I'm also concerned about the, about the expressions that I've heard, that, you know, it is a check and a balance on the community to have an independent elected clerk. I remember numerous times where Penny Sherwood would challenge the select board on decisions they were making, and sometimes she would change her minds, and I think that that sort of separation of powers was a healthy thing, and if the clerk's job is dependent upon always pleasing the majority of the select board, I think that that might create problems in the future. So I'm very divided myself, very conflicted on where I go with this, but I thought if there was enough people that thought a five-year notion of absolutely making sure it's on the ballot in five years, thought it was a good idea that they could stand up and make that amendment.
Right there, Krista. They're coming. Finn's on his way.
Thank you, Krista Sorongo. I just appreciate this challenge, because I think it's one we face on the school board, where there's increasing complexity in the work of our administrators, there are fewer volunteers, or folks just in general, to serve in varying capacities, and, you know, I don't think it's an either-or, and I think that providing our community multiple opportunities to see behind the curtain of what happens with the select board might ease our concern over allowing you to do this thing that seems to make a lot of sense. So I would just encourage you to think about how you can continue to build those opportunities for relationships and transparency and involvement, and still allow you to do this hard and complex work in the way that makes the most sense for you.
Okay. Amy?
Bob had his hand up first.
Okay, fine.
At present, let's see, I started this conversation, and I've been an elected clerk and treasurer, by the way, by saying that I didn't have too many strong feelings, but I saw the, what I thought was kind of the change in our old town meeting democracy if we went this way. Obviously, a number of you feel the same way about that, and a number of you also think that we could be more businesslike another way. I vote against the other way of being more businesslike. I think we succeed as we do now, and we have a better check on it ourselves. I say this as a person who stood for these elections, and won them too, but for that matter, in a different town.
in a different town, by the way. But my question for the Select Board and for the future is, I see that at present we have three positions filled by two people, a treasurer and a clerk, and an assistant clerk. I think we're proposing to have only two people fill the two positions, and I can just see a mission creep where we'll have three, another employee down the line with a new assistant. I don't think they suspect they're going to do that now, but I see with this system, it could easily develop and may be needed, for all I know. But I, it doesn't seem to be needed at the moment, and I think it's another reason to vote this down.
You go to John.
Thanks. I would, John Warriors, I would second what Bob just said. I would be interested in, in, you know, how this might develop if we're to separate it out, but I just would reiterate that, you know, it's really hard to find ways for government to be accountable, really hard to establish those things. Takes, you know, it hasn't really been done that well for a couple hundred years since they set it all up, and I think if we give it away too easy, we're making a mistake. I intend to not support this. I would rather have a slightly less organized management of our civil affairs and more accountability than a perfectly efficient management and no accountability. And that's a stark way of contrasting those two. I have a lot, I want to reiterate my faith in our elected officials and our appointed officials in the town, but I think we have to contemplate when we might not be happy. And do we want an independently-elected clerk who's also accountable and maybe represents us in a way that other elected officials might not? Not that that is at all the case at the moment, but we have to contemplate that possibility. Systems are set up to prevent problems if they were to arise.
Thank God.
I can speak to, Valerie Hansen. I can speak to the fact that these are both really big jobs, and they take a lot of time. And one person trying to do these two jobs does not work, I can tell you that. It does not work. It used to work, but it doesn't work now. They have become very diverse and very involved. So having said that, anyone in the town of Bristol or that resides in Bristol can come and run for town clerk or treasurer. They just need to submit a petition, get the, get the signatures and submit a petition. Where I take comfort in knowing that the Select Board is going to appoint the town clerk and treasurer is in that someone, people that I trust, have looked at their credentials, and they are going to hire the person that is most qualified. I trust them to do that. Now, having said that people can come to the, or anyone can run for town clerk and treasurer, when I come to the polls, I may not know that person that's running. I have no information. And so, I like this. I think this is a good idea. I trust our Select Board to make the right decision, and I want to know that the most qualified person is running that office, because an organization is only as good as the people that represent it.
I'd like to propose a compromise, that the Select Board bring the candidates to a public forum before they decide who gets the jobs, so that the voters have a chance to meet them, hear them, ask them questions, and the Select Board gets a chance to hear the voters' questions and the voters' comments about the candidates. Then the Select Board would appoint a candidate to be to fill the positions.
Can you put that in more, is that an amendment? Or are you just suggesting that to the Select Board if things get approved?
I could make that an amendment.
Well, go ahead.
That candidates selected by the Select Board be presented at a public forum for voters to hear them and ask them questions before the Select Board actually appoints.
So candidates for office before the Select Board make a decision would come before the community for a public forum?
Yes.
If not the Select Board, any present, that has a presentation?
Yes.
So Bob, just to be sure I have this correct, I have you amending the article to add that the Select Board bring the candidates selected to a public forum prior to the appointment with the ability for the public to ask questions.
And hear the, hear the candidates.
And hear the candidates.
Do I have a second to that amendment?
Second.
Second.
Was that candidates plural or...?
I heard plural. Right, however many there might be, I guess. Discussion on this amendment? Yes, right there.
I guess I'm gonna have to hold, because I'm not prepared to discuss the amendment I was prepared to discuss prior to the amendment, so I'll wait.
Is your question applicable with the amendment, or do you want to...
Not at this moment.
Okay. Anyone want to speak to the amendment? Are we clear on it? Everyone's clear on it? Okay.
Carol Wells. I just, a point of clarification, did you want all candidates who had applied to the position, or the finalists? I'm just saying, just wanted to make it clear.
All candidates.
All candidates, you're saying?
That's how it says now, that's how it reads. Brings candidates. All right, any other questions on this amendment? Okay, up in the balcony. Thank you for waving the book.
My name's Bruce Beacon, and what I find lacking in the amendment is that it doesn't close the loop. It doesn't say who gets to do the hiring. Is it a joint interview between the Select Board and the public attending? Or is it a chance for the public to finalize the choice? And I think that needs to be stated in the amendment.
All righty. I, I, I read the amendment that we're, that it's, the voters will authorize the Select Board to make the appointment, period, and that there's an opportunity for input by the public in, prior to them deliberating and making a decision. That's how I read that. Is that your intention?
Yes.
Does anyone else kind of feel that's the way it goes, or not? Okay. I think that's, I think we're authorizing the Select Board, but the public has a chance to speak up and maybe influence the Select Board's decision. That's how I see it, as amended. Yes?
I'll make the attempt. My name's John O'Trepan. It seems as though there's two objectives on one side and two on the other. One objective is that we have faith and trust in the Select Board, should they need to appoint someone in some set of circumstances, that I think we would be happy with that. On the other hand, there's a sense of needing to have the chance to have a vote, when that comes into play, to make sure that there's a potential for the townspeople to say, "We agree to this," or "We don't agree to that." So that's on an annual basis. The other part about it is the sense of independence, as it was brought up, that that person that is going ahead and maybe questioning some, some members of the Select Board, that there's a sense of independence there. There's also the idea of being qualified, and that person might, that may be best qualified, might be a person that does not live within the town. I don't really have a conclusion here definitively. If there was a way to have that one position be a voted position, but with a person, with a person that may not be a town resident, is that a possibility, does that help solve the problem and achieve the objectives? So essentially, you'd have the, the, the Select Board could go ahead and vote, or appoint, rather, a qualified person for a short interim period of time. That person could be, if they were out of town, could be up for a vote and approval by the townspeople, so they have that ability to say yea or nay, and, and have the checks and balances. That person would also have some level of independence in how they operated and functioned with the Select Board. I also don't really understand, who, in most jobs, you have a period of a sort of probation or some sense of, of a review period, and then you're, you know, you're gonna go on, unless there's unions involved and so on. So that's, that I, I think could solve the problem, if there could be that one position where it could be voted on, but necessarily the person that would be putting themselves up for the position of clerk, as I understand it, could be not a resident of the town. Essentially, what you're getting down to is you want a qualified person, the best person, whether it's in town or not. You want the ability of the Select Board in certain situations to be able to appoint that person, whoever it may be, but the voters want the ability to go ahead and say, "On every yearly basis, we would like to renew that person, whether they be in town or not," and that there's a sense that that person has independence in how that they, they can function with the Select Board, and they're not kowtowing to, as it was mentioned, the majority of the Select Board. That's, I don't want to belabor this, I'm just trying to distill what I hear as, as the valid points and the objectives, which are probably most commonly agreed upon. Thank you.
It's my understanding that state statute requires elected officials to be residents of their town. End of story. Say that again, please. It's my understanding that the state statutes require elected officials to be residents of their towns, registered voters of their towns. End of story.
I'd like to, to point out the track record...
Where are we? Okay.
I'm sorry. I, I'd like to, to point out the track record of the town. In, in the appointments we've made, I, I have no fears of, of anybody holding this board accountable, because if, if you're, if any of your employees came to you and raised a fuss, you could come to your next Select Board meeting and hold us all accountable. That's your job. We have made several appointments where we haven't had any, we have had community input, but we have made the appointments. We appointed an administrator, we appointed a fire chief, we appointed a police chief, we appointed a road foreman, and all of those people, recreation director, and I think all of those people served this community extremely well. And I, I, I think the accountability is not an issue, in, in my eyes anyway, because we serve you, and if we don't do our job, which is evident by when we do something that upsets the community, we have a roomful, which doesn't happen very often. And anytime that's happened, we've addressed the issues, and I think for the most part, the community's happy. So I'm not, I'm not worried about an employee coming to us with an issue or confronting us with something they believe should be done different. I would be upset if they felt they couldn't. And if they came to us with a legitimate gripe and we didn't listen, then shame on us.
Any other questions on this amendment? To Article Six.
And may I just add to Pekar's thing? I'm looking at our road foreman, who's a resident of the town of Starksville, I'm looking at our rec director, who's a resident of the town of Starkville also, and I'm looking at Vower here on my left, is a resident of Warner, and I think we've made some great choices. And that's not to say we've made other choices, and those, our police chief and other people, they live in the village or the town here with us, so. The board vetted every employee pretty really hard.
So I just want to say something, I'm not really sure if this is the time, because are we now talking about Bob's amendment?
We're talking about, yes.
Oh, okay.
Which is, which is about the public input of the candidates.
So, I mean, can I make a comment that refers to the original article that may also address Bob's amendment, but I'm not even sure?
Well, give it a shot.
Okay. You know, this is all very new to me, because I only just became a citizen like last June, so I've never actually... So I've never been, I mean, I've been to lots of town meetings, you know, when I lived in Lincoln and so on, but I've never been able to vote on anything or express my opinion publicly about issues. And I, I mean, I rarely feel that this issue is too big an issue to, or it has become an issue that I think people obviously feel very passionate about, and I would be hard pressed to vote on it definitively, one way or the other. So, to my way of thinking, you know, I, I, I would suggest a compromise that maybe, you know, the original article and Bob's thing, Bob's amendment, but could be to authorize the Select Board to appoint a town clerk until the next election. I mean, where this, and so during this year, there could be more discussion on it, because, I mean, I just feel this is gonna go on until the cows come home, and I don't know, we could be here a long time.
Someone can always call the question.
Yeah. Oh, so that's what I have to do?
No, no, not necessarily, I'm not, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Okay, all right. So, I guess I could call the question. I don't know.
On the amendment.
Yeah, on the amendment, so we could kind of get to the next thing, yeah?
Okay, so are you?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
And we have a second. We need two-thirds of you to agree that we're going to move to vote on the amendment as proposed by Mr. Donnis. Those that would like to move on to a vote, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay, we're gonna do that. So if, Jen, before you go, I just want to have you read the amendment.
So the amendment states that you're authorizing the Select Board to appoint the clerk as provided, and that the Select Board will bring candidates selected to be presented at a public forum before the appointment with the ability to ask questions.
Good.
And hear the candidates.
Hear the candidates in this question. Okay. All right, all those in favor of that amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The nays have it. The nays do have it. We're back to Article Six as written. Will the voters of the town of Bristol authorize the Select Board to appoint a town clerk as provided in seventeen BSA? Aye, yes. There you go.
I'm Jacob Trop. I tend to agree with Simone. I feel like we're at a standstill, and there are a lot of big issues... Um, I feel like we're at a standstill and there are a lot of big issues that need to be dealt with. So I would recommend some sort of compromise. It seemed like, and I don't, I don't want to speak for everybody, but it seemed like a lot of people trust the Select Board to deal with this particular situation right now in the way they want to deal with it, to have Jen and Sharon work out some things. And so I think maybe an amendment could be made to allow that to happen without sacrificing for the, before we sort of launch into having the Select Board appoint both of those positions in the future. Uh, so if somebody wanted creatively come up with an amendment, since I'm not, I don't think I can do it myself. Um, but I think it's, it's complicated because I feel like some people might want to have the clerk elected, might not want to have the treasurer elected. And I think it's, it needs to be a bigger discussion. But I think we all might agree, I'm not sure, that a lot of us would agree that the Select Board should, should Jen get elected? That they should be, the Select Board should be able to appoint Sharon to be town clerk after so many days and she could be treasurer. And that would be fine for the time being. And then we could have more discussion about what should happen down the road. So if somebody else wants to.
Down here. Well, hang on, hang on, you can't. Identify yourself. Thank you.
Can we call the question and vote on it?
Robert Compton Bristol, are you calling the question?
Yes, I am.
Okay, do you have a second? Okay. Those that would like to vote on Article six as it's presented here in the warning, please say aye.
Aye.
Those that would like to continue the discussion, please say nay.
Nay.
I believe the ayes have it. They appear to have it. And we're going to rule what they do. So we're back to Article six. Any discussion on the article? Or are we good? No, you called, yeah, we did, didn't we? We did. That's correct. Okay, so, will the voters of the town of Bristol authorize the Select Board to appoint a town clerk as provided in seventeen BSA, section twenty-six fifty-one E? Those in favor of this article, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
I'm, I'm going to ask for a division of the House. I can't move in. So I'm, what I'm going to ask, if you're voting aye, please stand and we'll have a count.
I only vote when it's a difference.
Stay standing. Okay, you may be seated. Those that vote nay, please stand. The count is sixty-four yays, thirty-nine nays. The ayes have it. Article six passed. Article seven. Will the voters of the town of Bristol authorize the Select Board to appoint a town treasurer as provided in seventeen BSA twenty-six fifty-one F? Do I have someone who will move this motion? Yes, second. Discussion on Article seven. Right there, behind you, Finn.
Craig Allen, first I'd like to say I support Jen and all her predecessors over the thirty-plus years I've lived in town here. But the future could end up with a three to two vote by the Select Board, whoever's up there in the future for one of these positions. I missed the opportunity to do this on Article six. However, Dave has shamed me into offering an amendment for Article seven, which would add one, add a sentence, simply stating, uh, Article seven is written, then add a sentence, an article to revisit this authorization will be placed on the two thousand twenty-four town meeting warning.
So we're adding a sentence that an article to revisit this issue will be placed on the ballot on two thousand and twenty-four. On the warning on two thousand and twenty-four. Is that correct, Craig? Okay. On the warning, two thousand and twenty-four. Do I have a second? Do I, okay. Discussion on the article, which would have us revisit this question in four years. Any discussion? Right there.
Yeah, John, I was going to offer this on the last go around before it was called, but, uh, maybe, maybe we should sunset this thing at a certain point in the not-too-distant future, which is essentially, I think, Craig, what you're saying. Give, give people an opportunity to pass judgment on at some point in the future. But rather than defer it to automatically, you know, removing our votes on, on the town office, maybe we should cause it to sunset so that the other side has to make an affirmative case for the change.
What's the other side?
Well, the side that would rather appoint this position rather than have it elected. But it seems like we're really discussing here an expansion of the town's staff and salary line and all that. And it just seems like this is not the place to do it. But speaking to the amendment, I think is what I'm supposed to be doing, so. Yeah, I think it could be more precise. I would vote against it in this language, but I, I respect and, and I think it's well intended.
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
Is there a procedure for tabling this amendment, this amendment and this article?
You can.
I move we table this, second.
Hold on. Let me. Someone seconded that, right? If I'm not mistaken, in terms of the rules, tabling, uh, does have the same impact as defeating the amendment. There's no, we're not bringing it up in the future and whatever unless, unless people proactively put it on the warning. And it is a, it is an appropriate motion to be made. And I just want to check how many people have to vote, whether it's a majority or two thirds. Majority. And there's no discussion permitted. So, there's been a motion and seconded that we table Article seven pertaining to the treasurer. If you vote in the affirmative, uh, we move on to Article eight. And, uh, and we're done with, with this piece. If you vote nay against, then you wish not to, to, uh, end the discussion and end deliberation on the issue. All those in favor of approving. Uh, no, discussion is permitted on the table. You, you, you make a decision now how you want to do it. If we table this, Patty, we basically put it aside not to be brought up again tonight.
But when does, when will it be brought up?
There is, it has to be brought up as any other article would be in the future. It's not, we're not saying, okay, we'll take care of it in the future. In the table, uh, uh, motion, that's not the case. It's dead.
But the Select Board decides that or?
No. No, that's the, that's what table the, the article needs.
Does the Select Board decide when it's going to be brought up again?
They can. They can. Yes. They can, or people could petition for something. Yes. So again, um, a yes vote means it's dead. We move to the next article. A nay vote says you want to vote on this. All those in favoring of tabling Article seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
I believe the nays have it.
Division.
Okay, division. We're doing, going to do the same thing we did last time. Those who vote in favor of tabling, in other words, killing it, please stand.
Strong word.
It is. Respectfully burying the article. All right, please be seated. Those that vote nay, not to table this, but to continue, please stand. Yes, stay standing. Stay standing. Stay right here. The vote with the counting correct was forty yes, fifty-two nay. Article seven, will the voters of the town of Bristol authorize the Select Board to appoint a town treasurer as provided in seventeen BSA? Any discussion? Yes.
I would propose an amendment that this provision sunset, uh, in time to be considered for next town meeting.
Second.
Sunset, right?
Sunset means. Out of effect, automatic.
Oh, we still have the twenty twenty-four amendment.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
We still have the twenty twenty-four amendment. That's right. Okay. Obviously, this is important stuff to you guys. So it's, it's good. It's good. Any discussion on the amendment? I can. Will the voters of the town of Bristol authorize the Select Board to appoint the town treasurer? And then the new sentence would be that an article to re. Restate?
An, uh, an article to revisit the authorization, the authorization in the twenty twenty-four town meeting warning.
Okay. Any more discussion? Our hearing, we're seeing no hea, uh, yes, sir?
Tell us who you are. Uh, just a point of information.
Tell us who you are.
Uh, Chris Bray. Can, uh, a vote in this election bind a future, uh, group of voters to ask a particular question? Can you basically put a question on the agenda, an article, four years hence?
I don't know the answer for sure, Chris. That's a legal question. The question had to do with, are we?
Can we bind a future set of voters to a decision we made today? Can, can?
Can, in this article, we're saying, this is going to take effect, but in four years, in two thousand and twenty-four, we're going to, we're going to put it back on the, on the ballot in a sense. And, and the question is, and it's a good one, um, can, can this body do that? Is it permitted to do that? I don't know. And, uh, I guess the risks are, if you all approve the amendment, that it's stricken down. And what the implications are to the remainder of that article, I am not also sure. I don't know whether that means it's all dead or whether, you know, the, the piece that pertains to the appointment still stands. If we had a parliamentarian here, we might get an answer, but we don't. Good questions. Let's, any other, any other?
Craig Allen, uh, question has come up from John. Can then the assembled group here vote to sunset? As opposed to this twenty-four, you know, two thousand and twenty-four question? Can we even vote to sunset Article seven either?
It'd probably be the same question. And I'll, just let me remind the, the, the assembly. Someone could petition next year and get the required number of signatures, which I don't know how many would be, it's not an awesome amount, to have an article revisited or, or a new article. So every year, there is the opportunity for the citizens of Bristol to take action if they feel strongly enough. You know, if, if you feel it's critical, you do it tonight, well, God bless. But you always have that opportunity in the future. But you always have that opportunity in the future. Anything else on this amendment? We'll vote on it. Okay. You have to be recognized. Patty, can you get a mic to Patty?
Patty, have a leak. Do you need, will you restate it before we vote?
Oh, sure. Oh, sure. Sure. Okay. Will the voters of the town of Bristol authorize the select board to appoint a town treasurer as provided in seventeen VSA 2651F? And then we're adding-
To revisit the authorization at the 2024 town meeting warning.
That's what we're voting on. All those in favor of this amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
I believe the nays have it. Hearing no objections, we'll, we'll move that. Article VII amendment has been defeated. We go back to the original amendment. Earlier article, excuse me. Will the voters of the town of Bristol authorize the select board to appoint a town treasurer as provided in seventeen VSA? Okay, I'll have that Matt speak first.
So, Matt Dayler. I heard some concern about, well, we obviously were concerned about the, as Chris put it, whether that, and we defeated that amendment just now, whether that could, we could bind the voters a few years hence. And I heard some scuttlebutt worrying if we might run into the same issue with the sunsetting phrase. I was just wondering if it would be simpler, and I'm happy to offer this amendment, if it seems agreeable, to just insert the words, as opposed to using the sunset language, just saying, right after the word treasurer, just saying for a period of one year. So, will the voters of the town of Bristol authorize the select board to appoint a town treasurer for a period of one year, as provided in seventeen VSA?
Okay, do I have a second?
Oh, whether the, oh, and John here is suggesting to clarify whether we are authorizing the select board for one year, or authorizing the select board to appoint for one year. I don't know if that makes-
For a term of one year.
Maybe for a term, for a term of one year would make that more clear.
No.
So then what happens in one year?
Well, this, basically, a similar article would have to be on again next year. Shall we authorize it?
All righty, so what is, give me, give me the wording on your amendment, please.
Will the voters of the town of Bristol authorize the select board to appoint a town treasurer for a term of one year, as provided in seventeen VSA?
Okay. Do I have a second? I heard a second. There we go. Discussion on this amendment? Okay, yes, sir.
It seems to me this amendment offers the candidate very poor job security. And I don't thi- I think that's self-defeating.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none. Those in favor of amending Article VII to add after the word town treasurer? There was one more? You had a question?
Oh, oh, a comment, just that the school-
Hold on. Finn? I know.
The school board annually-
Who are you? Please identify.
Elizabeth, Liz Sayer from Bristol. And I, the school board does that every year. They do their treasurer and their clerk every year at the annual meeting. So, I don't know that anybody is particularly worried about whether or not. It's more us wanting to make sure that they're willing to serve another year is more of the issue. So, I think that's a reasonable compromise.
Any other comments, questions? So, we're going to vote now on the addition after the word treasurer that the appointment is for a period of one year. All those in favor of that amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
I believe the nays have it. And as a result, the amendment's defeated. Back to the original articles, which you all know what it is. Yes, Randy?
I call the question.
Call the question. Those in favor of going right for a vote on Article VII, and please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it. So, we're going to vote on Article VII. Will the voters of the town of Bristol authorize the select board to appoint a town treasurer as provided in seventeen VSA 2651F? Those in favor of the article as warned, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The eyes have it. And we've approved Article VII. How would you all like just a brief break, change the subject for a second? Mr. Chris Bray, who was your senator, contacted me late this afternoon, and he came down from Ripton, and has been in a whole lot of places. And he'd love three minutes to just tell you from the senate standpoint, a little bit about Montpelier. You can get a cup of coffee and refreshments. No problem with that, do you? Okay, Chris, the mic's yours.
Good evening. My name is Chris Bray. I'm your, one of your two state senators. At this point, I wish I was a stand-up comedian, because then I could do something to relieve the last fifty minutes or whatever of difficult back and forth. So, this is, I think, my sixth Bristol town meeting. But the first one in which I can say, I'm also a fellow citizen of Bristol. I moved here in August. So, I'll just very briefly. Well, the first thing is, I just want to thank people for the honor and privilege of representing you in the Vermont senate. I've been in eight years. I was four years formerly in the house. And, you know, these days, with the way politics are going, especially at the national level, it can feel rather toxic and kind of discouraging. You may not even want to have anything to do with it. Happily enough, I'd say, in the state legislature, you know, we elect one hundred and eighty people from all over the state, sort of butcher, baker, candlestick maker, there's all walks of life. And everyone, regardless of their party affiliation, I, my strong, genuine sense is, people come there with the same idea in mind. They want to make Vermont a better place for everyone who lives there. So, it is a remarkably friendly civil conversation. We disagree, but it doesn't become disagreeable. And I think we end up getting a lot of good legislation done. So, I'll speak very briefly on what I've been working on. For the last six years, I chair Natural Resources and Energy. We've done a lot of work on energy issues. We also have worked on clean water. We passed the Vermont Clean Water Act. How we fund it, how we implement it. And a fair amount of what we do each year is, when we're spending fifty, sixty million dollars a year on something, we want to make sure that your taxpayer dollars are being well spent. So, it's not as exciting as pushing forward a new bill, but we stop and we take a lot of testimony to try to make sure all taxpayer dollars are well spent. So, and then we make adjustments. There's no such thing as a perfect program. So, we learn from what's going on, we make adjustments, and then we continue again. In terms of, I'd say, probably some of the most pressing work going on right now, we all know that climate change is something that is really changing the Vermont and the planet around us. So, how can we address that? It's a, a, a large challenge. But the, underneath it all, there's a pretty simple physics. And that is, the more greenhouse gases we send up in the air, the more it accelerates climate change. So, we've been working to help people burn less fossil fuel, the source of those greenhouse gases. And, and we've done an excellent job in the last twenty years in reducing those emissions through our electricity program, Efficiency Vermont. We've spent, all of us together, we've invested six hundred and fifty-eight million dollars over those twenty years. But we're saving two-point-four billion in our electric bills. So, it's been a very cost-effective thing to do. It's also delivered a second benefit. It's the equivalent of taking two-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand cars off the road for a decade. So, it is meaningful in terms of reducing what we're sending up into the air. What we haven't been able to do under law is allow Efficiency Vermont to take their skill set and work on thermal heating and transportation. By law, they're not allowed to work in those areas. What we're doing right now is starting to stand up a program that says Efficiency Vermont, or a program very much like it, could help us do the same kind of thing. Save money, reduce emissions in our heating and cooling loads, and how we get ourselves around transportation. So, it's a work in progress. I'm very encouraged by what I've seen so far. It's probably time for me to break this over. So, I just want to say thank you for, again, for the privilege of serving. If you have comments, questions, et cetera, I live over on Pleasant Street. You can email, call, walk by, say hello. And I look forward to meeting more of you in person. I think I've spent most of my time in Bristol either sleeping or doing carpentry or painting so far in that house. But we'll be done soon enough. Thanks very much.
Twenty twenty-one. Do I have someone want to move that article? Here, second. Okay, seeing no hea- oh, we got one hand there. Where's?
They had a curfew.
Thank you. Let's see, the, the article is discussed in the Select Board's report, Select Board and Administrator's report. At the, at the top of page thirty-nine, and I have a couple of questions about that. The, the Select Board and Administrator's report says there's an undesignated fund balance of two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars plus. Can anyone tell me where that's also shown on the, in the rest of these reports? And I ask because on page twenty-six, there's a discussion of undesignated fund balance, and I can't find that figure.
Yeah, you're correct. We have a fund balance of about two-eighty-five. And by auditing firms, they want us to keep five percent for grain a day, so that's around a hundred and forty thousand. And as the next three articles, you'll see, we want to pay off the bridge. Instead of making a sixteen thousand dollar payment at almost three percent a year, just pay it off. In the next, in Article nine, ten, and eleven, and twelve, we want to use the, the rest of the undesignated fund balance to set up some-
Mr. Moderator, I'm not asking about the article, per se. I'm asking where the two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand is also shown in this report. Because on page twenty-six, it seems to say there's seven-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand at the top.
And this relates to the article?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it is from the undesignated fund balance, I'm trying to find out where the money is.
Jen can speak to it.
So, Bob, in reference to your page twenty-six notion of the seven-forty-seven, seven-oh-eight, that's a correct amount. As you see, the, the notation below it states that of that seven-forty-seven, three-hundred-and-ten-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars was from the sale of the property behind the fire station to Stony Hill Property, which is included in that seven-hundred, along with that A. Johnson money that Ken had, had questioned about earlier. So, removing those two figures, and then on top of keeping the five percent that Joel was talking about, gives you about two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars of undesignated fund money. I hope that explains that for you.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions in the back? Thank you very much, John.
Hi, Craig Allen. On the page twenty-six, though, when you subtract the four-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand-five-seventy-five for those two items from the seven-forty-seven, seven-oh-eight, you get three-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand-one-thirty-three, which is actually a drop of sixty-eight, one-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars from the previous year's amount, for whatever reason. Taking away five percent, which was over one-hundred thousand, does not get you to two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand. That gets you to, you know, two-hundred thousand or something, far lower than that.
We keep five percent of the, of the proposed general fund budget is the percentage that we keep.
Right, but, but you indicated that was one-hundred and some odd thousand.
I, the capital things that we're going to pay off-
I know, I know, it's definitely-
Those were one-hundred-and-thirty-odd, four-thousand.
There's a lot of stuff going on, but it's one reason that it helps to have a reconciliation kind of thing in a report like this. And maybe the audit report may actually have something like that. But it does raise questions.
Anyone else? If we're not, oh, we got over here. John?
Maybe I'm-
Mic's coming.
The microphone's coming. Math is not my strong suit, but it says in this narrative on page thirty-nine that setting aside five percent of total expenses, oh, it's total expense. So, one-forty-one-six is five percent of the overall budget, not five percent. I'm reading it right. Not five percent of two-eighty-five, obviously. All right, thank you.
That was mine. That was mine.
Okay, one more, Bob.
Thank you. May I ask what the, the remainder of the undesignated fund balance came from, as opposed to the part that's already been explained by the note on page twenty-six?
It, it came from department heads doing a good job of squeezing every nickel we can get and not spending their whole budget.
And what total was that? Thank you for letting me follow that up.
Valerie tells me we, we're going from a figure of two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand of undesignated fund balance.
Same follow-up on this?
In essence, it's a policy.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, Joel, I appreciate the, all the savings we make, but that also means we budgeted and voted more than we should have, doesn't it?
I'd rather be on that side a little bit than the other side of it.
It could also represent revenues that weren't anticipated, such as reimbursements or grants.
But, but was there that?
Seeing no other hands? Will the voters authorize the use of June thirty, two thousand and nineteen, general fund, undesignated fund balance to pay the balance of the South Sea Street Bridge loan finance to the People's United Bank with a current principal balance of fifty-two thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty dollars? Plus, in the interest accrued, the current loan rate of two-point-nine-five percent through the payoff date in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. All those in favor of Article nine, eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Articles passed. Article nine, will the voters authorize a transfer of twenty thousand of the June thirtieth, two thousand and nine, general fund, undesignated fund balance to the Capital Building Fund? Do I have a motion? And second, okay. They got all kinds of seconds. Questions on Article nine? Yes, sir?
Thank you. The general question for this article and for those following- The general question for this article and for those following is if we have use of this undesignated fund balance, why are we using it to put into the future when we have loans to pay from the past that could possibly be paid off with this money? And would that not be also an appropriate use of this money?
Good question, Bob, but we are, as you can see on page 35, if you've gone to the Saturday morning dump, you'll know our town garages are, use their life pretty well gone. We got the one, what we refer as the gray barn towards the west, was built over the old landfill, and now the tandem that sits in there sits in about six inches of, just dropped, the floor just broke right out of the way. We are hoping to, why do we want to put this in? We have $178,000 into that fund right now, the Capital Building. Did we tap it when we did work here downstairs? Yeah. We built the fire station, yeah. And now we want to build it back up, and we're hoping within three to five years, bring to you voters, a proposal to build a new public works facility. We want to get the fire station paid down a ways, get some years off that, we're in the third year now. And then, we're hoping, you'll see this in the next few articles, of Capital Building Reserve to put into that. And we also, not just for new buildings, we were painting Howden Hall, we painted that last year, and other repairs. We take out it that you can't budget for, and that's where the monies go. We want to build that fund up so we can, when we do build a new public for DPW building, we'll have some money available to tap in. That loan will be less money.
Any other questions? Any other questions on Article 9? Okay. There's no one behind you. Go ahead.
So I understand about building up a capital reserve, and I think I was the one who initiated the program in this town.
Oh, thank you.
But the question, though, is, and the question is not one that we can answer politically, but it's answered financially. Is it better to pay off past debt or to put more into the reserve when there already is past debt? And that's the question I'm asking the Select Board now.
Well, I think the past debt we have, besides the fire station, this building is, we made the last payment on the work downstairs that was done 10, 12 years, 10 years ago, maybe we're a few more payments on that. And we're paying Article 8, we felt that was a good move to do, pay off that South Street Bridge and get it done with. Do we have some payments? Probably do.
Bob, I think we talked about that, and this was the one loan we had that we could actually pay off. All the rest of them were above what the undesignated fund balance we had, so we decided to split the rest of it up into the Capital Building, so hopefully we wouldn't have to come back and bond later on for projects we had to do.
That's correct. The fire station's a bond and not a loan. It's a little bit different.
Same thing. Bob, I can tell you, in financial circles, it's an ongoing debate. It isn't clear as the nose on your face.
In essence, that's why I bring it up.
Percentage rates and all of that coming by. Anything else on Article 9? Okay, we're going to vote on it. Will the voters authorize a transfer of $20,000 of the June 30, 2019, general fund, undesignated fund balance to the Capital Building Fund? Those in favor of that article, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article 9's passed. Article 10, will the voters authorize a transfer of $25,000 of the June 30, 2019, general fund, undesignated fund balance to the Capital Paving Fund? Do I have someone to move it? Ten, second. Discussion on Article 10. Seeing none? Will the voters authorize a transfer of 25 grand to the June 30, 2019, general fund, undesignated fund balance to the Capital Paving Fund? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article 10's passed. Will the voters authorize a transfer of $30,000 from the June 30, 2019, general fund, undesignated fund balance to the Capital Sidewalk Fund? Do I have a motion to move that? Ten, and a second. Okay. Discussion on the sidewalk fund and the moving of the money. Seeing none? Will the voters authorize the transfer of $30,000 from the June 30, 2019, general fund, an undesignated fund balance of the Capital Sidewalk Fund? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article 11's passed. Will the voters establish a cemetery reserve fund pursuant to 24 VSA 2804 for the purpose of maintaining, repairing, and preserving cemeteries, that's in the plural, owned by the town of Bristol, and authorize use of the June 30, 2019, general fund, undesignated fund balance to the appropriate sum of 10 grand to it? Someone move that article? In a second. Discussion on the cemetery reserve fund. All right. With that light note, we have, well, we got one, okay. That gentleman right there.
Just very, don't want to slow us down. Matt Taylor. Would anyone on the Select Board just like to briefly speak to the thinking behind establishing this fund?
We have, as Fred said, we have a number of cemeteries, and there, we have stones that have been knocked down by trees that have fallen down. We don't have any, we don't have any extra money in the operating budget for those cemeteries to clean up trees that have fallen on the stones and to fix the fences when they get broke, so that's, that's the reasoning behind this.
So just out of the ordinary expenses that come up time to time?
That is correct.
Okay. Ready to vote on this one? Will the voters establish a cemetery reserve fund pursuant to 24 VSA for the purpose of maintaining, repairing, and preserving cemeteries owned by the town of Bristol, and authorize use of the June 30, 2019, general fund, undesignated fund balance to the appropriate sum of $10,000 to it? Those in favor of Article 12, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article 13, will the voters appropriate the following sums to be placed in various town reserve fund accounts as noted? Capital Building, $30,000. Capital Fire Equipment, $25,000. Capital Fire Vehicle Fund, $100,000. Capital Highway Equipment Fund, $135,000. Capital Road Fund Construction, $40,000. Capital Road Fund Paving, $125,000. Capital Sidewalk Fund, $35,000. Conservation Fund, $10,000. Reappraisal Fund, $5,000. Technology Fund, $7,000. The total in this article to be placed in various reserve funds is $512,000. Do I have someone to move that article? Right there, second. Discussion on this article. Right down here, Sean.
Thank you. So Pat and I have had, have realized what an incredible community we live in. Saturday night, we had a fire in our house, and the fire department was amazing. The smoke alarm probably saved our lives, and the fire department saved our house. The outpouring of help and support from our friends and neighbors has been just amazing. And as we move through the process of rebuilding the house, I think we have sufficient insurance money, I think we're okay financially, but experiencing the community we live in is, has just been extraordinary, and so that's part of why we should support the fire department. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on Article 13?
Just, Kevin Hanson, sorry. Just a point of clarification, these are in addition to previous articles?
The paving, Kevin, and sidewalk, that's correct.
Yes.
Why we, we heard you voters, two, three, three, four years ago up here, when we weren't spending, we were spending $17,000 on sidewalk. We heard it loud and clear, this board did. And that's why you'll see more. We want to do some more sidewalks, and we put extra in this year because of, we're going through, we're Little Bristol's big dig on Main Street this year to do the sidewalks, and we wanted to make sure we were covered on that.
Any other questions? Seeing none? Will the voters appropriate the sums below, I'll beg your pleasure not to read them all, to be placed in various town reserve funds as noted? The total is $512,000. Those in favor of Article 13, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article 13 is passed. Article 14, will the voters appropriate the following sums in support of the organizations listed below with set amounts level funded or lower from the prior year, which is pursuant to 24 VSA 2691? And the list, which I will read once, I need to, goes as follows. Addison County Restored to Justice, $1,150. Addison County Home Health and Hospice, $4,700. Addison County Humane Society, $1,000. Addison County Parent-Child Center, $4,800. Addison County Readers, $2,000. Addison County Transit Resources, $11,306. Addison County Riverwatch, $300. Age Well, formerly CVAA, $2,700. Bristol After School Kids Program, $1,275. Bristol Band, $1,200. Bristol Core, $10,000. Bristol Family Center, $4,000. Bristol Fourth of July Committee, $6,000. Bristol Historical Society, $2,500. Bristol Little League, $2,000. Bristol Recreation Club, $15,000. Bristol Rescue Squad, $13,500. Councilman Service of Addison County, $3875. Elderly Services, $2,200. Hope, $3,250. Hospice Volunteer Services, $1,200. John Graham Shelter, $1,400. Northeast Addison Television, NEET, right over there, $3,500. Open Door Clinic, $1,000. Retired and Senior Volunteer Program, $750. Vermont Adult Learning, $1,650. And Woman Safe, $3,500. The total being $105,756. Would someone please move the article? There we go, and a second. We got plenty. Any discussion on Article 14 or any of the associations? Okay, there you go, Rod. Hold on. On your left.
All right, Rod Kuzinoff, I would just like to say that so many of these organizations involve volunteer help, and I think this is one of the best bargains that we have in the program tonight, so.
Any, any other comments or questions? Seeing none? Will the voters appropriate the sums below in support of the organizations listed below with set amounts level funded or lowered from the previous year pursuant to 24 VSA 2691? The total is $105,756. Those in approval of Article 14 as it appears, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. We've passed Article 14. Article 15, will the voters approve an appropriation of $144,248 for the Lawrence Memorial Library for its annual operating budget? Said sum to be raised by taxes. What's your pleasure on that one? Move, second. There we go. Discussion on the library and the dollars needed. Right here.
Hi, my name's Caroline Engvall. I'm the chair of the library board, and I wanted to take a moment to recognize the director of the Lawrence Memorial Library, Nancy Wilson, who's up in the balcony. This is for her 30 years of service at the Lawrence Memorial Library. She has decided to retire this June, which I'm sure most of you know. I have had the pleasure to serve on the library board for some time with Nancy, and have always been impressed with her efficiency, efficient day-to-day management of our beloved library, but more importantly, by her incredible foresight. Over her 30 years, Nancy has consistently been at the forefront of changes, always keeping our library relevant and cutting edge. She always embraced changes as they came along. Nancy has overseen three major building projects at our library, building, the building of the accessible entrance in the bathroom downstairs, construction of a children's space and multipurpose room, and the renovation of the main floor of the library, which included new shelving, refurbishing of the walls, cleaning woodwork, new carpet, lights, and fans. She wrote all of the grants to fund those three projects. She has made the building itself a cozy space for people of all ages to enjoy, like a home away from home for many. She's represented our library on a state, county, and even a national level, keeping us connected and sharing ideas. Her proudest achievement at our library has been overseeing long-term staff who love the library and give excellent service to the community. She has the ability to inspire others to feel as excited and passionate as she does about libraries. Go ahead and ask her. When the board, we on the board and in the community wish Nancy a well-deserved retirement to pursue other interests such as travel and who knows what, we will certainly miss seeing her around the library, but rumor has it that she will still be willing to offer book recommendations. So Nancy, thank you, and as a friend, as well as a board member, I will miss you terribly, and I can't wait to see you around town in other capacities. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? It's probably very anticlimactic, but got to give you the chance. Seeing none? Will the voters approve an appropriation of $144,248 for the Lawrence Memorial Library for its annual operating budget? Said sum to be raised by taxes. Those in favor of Article 15, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article 15's passed. Will the voters appropriate $29,000 for the Bristol Cemetery Association, Inc., for the purpose of maintaining Greenwood Cemetery, mowing and trimming, in a well-kept manner in accordance with 24 VSA 2691? Do I have someone move this? And a second? Okay. Just for a note, this Bristol Cemetery Association is not one of the four that we voted on earlier, it is a separate, separate entity. I think there are six cemeteries in Bristol, if I'm not mistaken. This is one of, that's independent. Any questions on Article 16 or comments? Seeing none? Will the voters appropriate $29,000 for the Bristol Cemetery Association, Inc., for the purpose of maintaining Greenwood Cemetery, mowing and trimming, in a well-kept manner in accordance with 24 VSA 2691? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay. Will the voters appropriate $3,000 to Turning Point Center of Addison County for the purpose of supporting its mission to assist persons and their families and friends in recovery from substance use disorder and addictive behaviors in accordance with 24 VSA 2691? Do I have a, someone move that? Motion? Okay. In the back, those two folks. Okay, good. Do we have any questions? Yes, Mr. Donis.
Yes, I'm a member of the board of the Turning Point Center of Addison County. As we all know, addictions are a huge concern in our communities, Addison County, Bristol, and all the other communities, and in the state of Vermont, et cetera, and the whole country. Substance disorder is what it's called these days. Addiction is really what it is, and we all know that it is possible to get treatment for addiction and to recover addictions, and that's very difficult to do. Medication-assisted treatment happens right... that's very difficult to do. Medication-assisted treatment happens right here in Bristol with the Mountain Health Clinic. There's over a hundred patients right now at Mountain Health receiving medication-assisted treatment. That is one huge step, but another big step is staying in recovery once you get there. Staying, keeping yourself in a recovered life so you can move forward, raise your children, have jobs, all those kinds of things, and be productive citizens. That's very difficult to do because, you know, our brains love that stuff, and they continue to love that stuff, so relapses are not uncommon, or too common, as a matter of fact, but this is an organization that helps people stay away from it, helps people stay in recovery, helps people stay away from relapsing. And so, for example, two thousand and nineteen, there were ten thousand, over ten thousand five hundred sign-ins at the Turning Point Center. It's located in Middlebury on Creek Road, but it serves all of Addison County. Ten thousand five hundred people, signings occurred last year, coming in for services. Nine hundred and fifty for individual one-on-one support. Seven thousand five hundred and ninety-six people attended peer support meetings hosted by the Turning Point Center. Peer support, people in recovery helping each other stay in recovery. Narcan, or giving away free Narcan, is a thing to stop overdoses. And a lot of dedicated volunteers. So, the budget is a lot, most of it is ninety percent, is funded from various grants from the state and night away of Addison County, so we still need to raise about ten percent of the funds to support the Turning Point Center. We're asking every town in Addison County to support that. We're asking Bristol residents to support it with three thousand dollars. Appreciate your support. Thank you.
Any questions? We'll go to the article. Will the voters appropriate three thousand to the Turning Point Center of Addison County for the purpose of supporting its mission to assist persons, their families, and their friends in recovery from substance use disorder and addictive behaviors in accordance with twenty-four VSA? Those in favor of Article Seventeen, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article Seventeen's passed. Will the voters adopt the proposed two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one fiscal year public works and highway fund operating budget in the amount of eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, three hundred and sixty-five, eight hundred and fifteen thou- eight-one-five-three-six-five. A portion thereof in the amount of seven hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars to be raised by taxes. The tax rate on the two thousand twenty grand list, the town's sufficient to raise said sum as taxes to be determined by the select board. What's your pleasure? Second, there we go. Discussion on the highway fund. Seeing none, will the voters adopt the proposed two thousand twenty, twenty-one fiscal year public works highway oper-, fund operating budget in the amount of eight hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars, a portion thereof in the amount of seven hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars to be raised in taxes? The rate, the tax rate on the two thousand twenty grand list of the town's sufficient to raise said sum as taxes to be determined by the select board. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. We've passed Article Eighteen. Article Nineteen, will the voters adopt the proposed two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one fiscal year arts, parks, and recreation department budget in the amount of three hundred and thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars, a portion thereof in the amount of a hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars to be raised by taxes? The tax rate of the two hundred and twenty grand list of the town's sufficient to raise said sum as taxes to be determined by the select board. Someone move this article, and a second. Discussion on the rec. department's budget. Seeing none, will the voters adopt the proposed two thousand twenty, twenty-one fiscal arts and parks recreation department budget in the amount of three hundred and, three hundred thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars, a portion thereof in the amount of a hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars to be raised by taxes? The tax rate of the two thousand and twenty grand list of the town's sufficient to raise said sum as taxes to be determined by the select board. All those in favor of Article Nineteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Article Nineteen is passed. Article Twenty, will the voters adopt the proposed two thousand twenty, twenty-one fiscal year general fund operating budget of the town in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars, a portion thereof in the amount of seven hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars to be raised by taxes, subject to modification by actions on the previous articles? The tax rate on the two thousand and twenty grand list of the town's sufficient, sufficient to raise said fund as taxes to be determined by the select board. Do I have a motion to move it? Yes, second? Discussion? Any amendment to the total? Any amendment to the total based on whether we moved it? No? Okay. Okay. Will the voters adopt the proposed two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-year town of Bristol General Fund operating budget in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars, a portion thereof in the amount of seven hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars to be raised by taxes, subject to any modification by actions on the previous articles, which I gather there were none? The tax rate on the two thousand and twenty grand list, the town's sufficient to raise said sum as taxes to be determined by the select board. Those in favor of Article Twenty, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And Article Twenty-one, is to con, is to transact any other non-binding business that may legally come before this meeting. Chance for people to, I guess, speak to things.
Fred, I'd, um, I'd like to take this time, Peter's heard this a couple of times, he's gonna slap me when he get out of the meeting probably, but, um, back in two thousand seventeen when Teresa left us around early September, and then Valerie came in late October, Peter really took the ship here and just guided us through Peter Coffee, and as you know, tonight's Peter's last meeting, and I'd like to thank him for his four years of service to the board. He's been a real asset to this board on management and personnel.
Any other, any other comments, thoughts by the public? Yes. Please identify yourself.
Sarah Scott from Sprout Street, and I just wanted to let everybody know that last spring Bristol Elementary started a mentoring program at the school, which is also true in most of the other towns in the five-town area, and they're looking, a lot of kids want, I'm lucky enough to be a mentor at Bristol Elementary, and they're looking for a lot more adults to do that. It only takes an hour a week to go down and make a difference in a kid's life, so if you're at all interested in being a mentor and have time at lunchtime Monday through Friday, one day a week, let me know. Thanks.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? Right there. Mr. Jennings, I think it is.
Carl Engvall, Bristol. Want to give a very quick review of the Bristol Energy Committee doings last year. This winter, the Energy Committee made eighty interior storm windows for ten families in Bristol and two families in surrounding towns. These affordable inserts are making these homes less drafty, more comfortable, and are saving homeowners money in heating costs. We even had some generous Crystalites voluntarily overpaying for their windows, hoping to lower the cost for their neighbors who could use a little assistance. So while your winter heating bills are fresh in your mind, make sure to contact Sally Burrell, the chair of the Energy Committee, to get your name on the list for our next session of this project, which will be in the fall. There's the added incentive that efficiency Vermont provides a one hundred dollar rebate for purchasing three windows or more. The average cost per window is thirty-five to fifty-five dollars depending on size. You can contact us on Facebook, or you can go to the Town of Bristol website and follow links to our webpage there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to Liz and Sean who took over for Aiden Mark, excuse me. One more, right there, sure.
Hi, it's Katie Raycroft-Meyer. I'm the chair of the Bristol Planning Commission, and we are updating the Bristol Town Plan currently, and we have been for a while, and we're gonna have an open house on April seventh here, and we're offering free pizza to anyone who wants to come and give us their input on the plan, and there's some notices in the back about it.
Did I do okay, Chauncey, on the fiscal versus physical? Most of the time, I slipped up. He always gives me grief for that, you know? Fiscal is right. Physical is not. I make that mistake. Did you have something?
Oh, I just wanna say, Patty, you have to leave for, we thank the town for helping us with the Bristol Peace Garden, you know, they donate some money, go for flowers and stuff, and respond by volunteers, we'll enjoy the support. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn? There you go. Second. Okay, we're adjourned.
And if you would like to stick around and help us pick up the chairs and set up the votes for tomorrow's voting, we'd much appreciate it.